Bacon hello mate. Sorry I'm running late, we're very late for the city council meeting. Okay.
L U N C H U S, Lunchus is better than all the rest. Wild channel point redemptions, aliens come with strange intentions. Lunchus Lunchus, streamer we adore, clones and robots and so much more. Tune in for the lives that will keep you alive at twitch.tv slash Lunchus to catch him live.
Skasa J. Thank you very much for the follow. Just getting started here. You get buggered for this for being late, pretty much. Okay, oh no. Yeah, I'll call someone first.
Hi Daniel, you okay?
Oh hi my, should I'm running a little late, right? I might, could I get, could somebody maybe come and pick me up?
Right, yeah, let me see if Luchuk can come and pick you up, okay?
Alright, I'm at the house.
Are you fit for a meeting though?
I'm at the hospital. I'm thirty, are you fit to be coming to this meeting? Course I am, I could run a marathon right now.
Right, okay, well we do need your input Daniel, so it would be great if you could come here.
Yes.
But I'll see if someone can pick you up.
Yes please, okay.
Okay, well I'm gonna have a chat if you can pick you up and then I'll send you a message, alright?
Okay, thank you my. Alright. Maybe the uncount? Hmm. Nah, uh. Nah, let's just go regular. I'll say someone dropped my, um clothes off to the hospital. Sorry about your heart, I need mannequins. I don't wanna make it too farcical, but I, um, don't want it to be too serious either. Proud, it's a proud walk isn't it? No, um. None of those semi-serious heart attacks. I got cocaine on me.
How are you walking around?
Hi so, what do you mind?
You just had a heart attack.
Oh dad, no I'm fine. I'll be okay, alright?
It's not a heart attack, what happened?
It was a, uh our heart, uh, incident or something, I don't know. Listen, don't worry about my. Luchuk. I'll be fine.
Okay. You sure?
Yeah, I'm tiptoe. And I never felt healthier in my life, look at this mighty ache. What the hell is he doing? Whoa, okay, alright. Is that a, uh? Is it local?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you for coming to get me started, I really appreciate it, alright? What does it mean?
Uh, no we haven't started yet, we were waiting a bit because, uh we haven't really discussed anything yet.
Oh fantastic, alright. It was a hard defence. It's more of a hard defence, right? Not an attack.
What was that defence against?
Well probably, uh I don't know, right? Impurities. Diamonds.
Makes sense.
Thank you. I'm very, a little underprepared here. Let me get the doll for you. Hello there. Oh fantastic, one or two?
I was not expecting to see you.
Oh, my?
Of course, yes.
No fun!
Rough time in hospital from what I saw on Verdi, you look like you're in some state.
Well I'm, I'm here, ain't I?
You are, I suppose commendable or something, aren't you?
Is that, um, that cough, is that contagious? Is that something?
What? No. No, 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 listen, right, I have had a, uh, minor incident.
Right, right. I'd ask you more, but I think, um, best waiting Suzie, coming back.
Oh yeah, she's gonna wanna know, ain't she?
Oh yes, yes.
Oh.
Suzie's like.
Yeah, it's sticking the nose in the, well, I guess, I mean, I suppose it is her business, right?
Quite.
Yeah, yes.
Did you grab those snacks, Chuck?
Oh no, forgot. You can go, you can go again, it's vending machine downstairs.
Think that could be another document for yourself, Henry.
Another what?
Document, perhaps now not the same.
I have a, uh, almost expired satan rape, it's a little saga, but I may have fit, should, uh give you the sustenance you need, right? I got, I got two satan reps to kombuchas about to expire.
Oh, expired hospital for them, no, no thanks Daniel.
No, this is leftover from, uh
Oh, I do quite like that kombucha stuff.
Yes. Of course, let me, let me get up, hang on. Let, let me get up.
You sure you're okay to be here, Daniel?
I'm fine!
Okay.
Take tea.
A little tip for yourself.
Oh, appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. Everybody all set for the big maiden?
Yes, just waiting on them, I guess.
Yes.
I think she has just stepped out for a sec.
Yes, I think they've been made of, uh, appearance from Roger, the police commissioner, I'm not sure, have you met Roger before?
Of course, yes, he's been to meetings.
Well, no you've met him Henry, I know obviously Chuck's, um
I met him, yes.
Daniel, have you, you met him before?
Yes, he, he was one of the people who voted my end to the city council.
Oh yes, yes, of course, who could forget?
Yes, Commissioner Mayen. What's the difference? Right, what's the difference between Commissioner and Chief Police? I never did figure.
Um, the Commissioner would be in charge if he had like, uh, like other police stations, you know, like you have up north for example, or you don't see that, but he's, he's more, his role is more, uh
Symbolic.
Ways, no, no, no.
Hell right.
Overseeing things.
Bullshit, I ain't really required.
Original manager, or the branch manager, almost.
Yeah, so I'm
Oh yeah.
Directly managing like the officers or what's happening in the PD and the Commissioner would oversee that and handle like, uh
Of course.
Meetings and that kind of thing. And I think between the PD and, uh, this office for example.
Yeah, yes.
But I've been, I've been, uh the first few meetings, it was just the Commissioner that was, oh?
Did you, did you have any poo, Suzie?
Sorry, I just, uh, I've had a terrible migraine, I'm just, uh I'm fine now, I'm fine now, I don't poo.
What do you mean you don't?
Girls don't poo, right?
Doesn't sound healthy.
No, no, we don't, we don't poo now, we, uh, it's just air.
Air?
No, not fart, just air.
Gays?
It's just air that comes out of your buttock.
Like gays or oxygen, you talking oxygen?
No, no, it's not, it's different.
Like a bryce?
It's air, but it smells like poo.
Farts?
Hmm, I don't think so.
No, I think, I think farts contain poo particles.
I was, I was just thinking the same.
Yeah, that sounds different.
Yeah, no, it's very clean air, it just smells of shit.
It was methane.
Alright, so shitty, shitty air versus gases, poop.
What would happen if you did it in front of a candle?
I'd probably blow the candle right out.
It would make a, uh, what do they call it, blue angel?
I'm sorry?
A blue angel? Ain't it called a blue angel where you, uh, you put your legs behind your head and, uh, hold a ladder right in front of your, your your, uh, butthole, right?
So we know that Daniel's feeling better.
I feel a hundred percent saying, what you mind?
That's fine, that's
I guess word spreads fast, huh?
They're asking if this is one of those Roger things to do down at the church.
It sounds like a ritual or something.
Well, you ain't never put your legs behind your head, held ladder in front of your butt and done a fart? And then, uh, it creates a, uh No.
No, I've done, I've done the firework, but, um, no, not the blue angel.
Okay, right, this is, uh, this is the meeting commencing, so anything said after this point will be recorded by Henry in a minute. So be careful what you say, okay?
Of course, right.
Right, um, okay. Bit of an update from me, um, I've been hearing on the grapevine that people have been calling out for security detail on the grapevine?
Yes.
Through the grapevine.
Through the grapevine, yeah, okay.
From the grapevine, right?
Okay, yeah, uh, that people have been quite worried about me actually and wanting me to have some security detail in place because you know, they've seen that my life was put in danger a few times, if you didn't know, I was taken hostage, um, a few weeks ago.
I know, I was there as well.
Yeah, okay, and then two, um, two locals pursued me straight afterwards, it's like they wanted to finish the job. Uh, very frightening experience, I guess it's just what comes along with having such a privileged position as I do. Um, but it really did open my eyes to the danger that I could be facing if I go out on public alone again.
Yes, well, we had one person, uh, come along yesterday to the to the community maiden to raise that issue, right? Very strange, my, and yes.
He's very concerned.
Yeah, oh well, you know, that's very sweet, that's very sweet, I mean you know, normally I would just brush that stuff under the carpet, but we always talk so much about listening to what the community wants and you know, that's gonna put their minds at ease knowing their mayor's gonna be in safe hands and I think, you know?
Yes, but I mean, it's, this is one issue that's been raised out of, out of a hundred, right? I mean, I, I
I, I, I've heard, I've heard from the grapevine that people, there was quite a few people that are concerned about this. Which is quite understandable, I mean, you know, if, if you didn't have me as the mayor, then it could be chaos, could be a civil war.
Yes, I agree.
Civil war, really?
Oh, I, I don't think you understand the power that this position holds, Daniel.
I, I understand, you know, there's a lot of, I didn't realise it was that hard strikes, right?
Oh, yes, yeah. Why do you think I dress so drab, Daniel? Why do you think I wear such plain colours? They want something comforting and familiar.
Oh right, I figured, you know, you didn't wanna, uh you know, you wanted to keep your, uh the two, the two separate, right?
Yeah, well, a bit of that as well, but it's just, you know, they don't want someone flashy, they just want someone who's gonna get the job done, you know, so with that in mind.
Well, can I just, can I just add on that, if you want something a little lower cut? And, uh maybe you grew your hair out just a little bit? And smiled a little more, I think people would be much happier with that.
That is literally the most misogynistic thing I've ever heard in my life.
Well, no, I don't mean it like that.
Listen, I'm not trying to be a sex object, Daniel, I'm trying to be a serious mayor of this city.
But people find this, I mean, some people would, I mean, this whole style.
You're right, listen, you're the, you're the person who's supposed to be telling me how to engage more with the community and sex sells, it makes so much sense.
Thank you, well, look at mine.
Yeah, I'm gonna, Henry, can you make that an action for me, please? I'm gonna, gonna go shopping.
She gonna sex it up.
That can be paid for through City Hall funds, right? Because it is a
A role.
Of course, definitely, a write-off, of course.
Yeah, and extensions, hair extensions, have you just had that in as well, please?
You know, I can be, uh I could sit there and, while you try on different outfits and, you know, be like, oh, I don't know I don't know until you finally find the right one.
Like a montage out of a film.
Exactly, just like that, yes.
Add that to the actions, please, I'm on, we need to create a montage.
Yes, sexy montage, my is gonna get a glow up, right?
Oh yeah, I'm excited for this, a bit nervous, but listen, I don't want to, I don't want to lose, you know, I want people to take me serious still as well, I don't want people just to see me as a bit of meat, so we're gonna have to make that balance, but
Oh yes, of course.
Are you gonna be hiring security?
Well, um, well, I was actually gonna speak to you about that, to be honest, because you've had quite the uptick in police officers recently, Luchuk and I'm just thinking you could, I would only need it for public, um, events, you know? I feel like that's reasonable.
Or just go on to the bar.
That's not an event, if there's, if there's events that you're attending? Then
Or what, or public, public events maybe?
If it's specific things, then yeah, but we can't really afford to have, uh an officer assigned to you at all times.
Maybe not at all times, but maybe if you had like a squad or smaller group, you know, people that that the, the mayor can reach out of and they know, and know them, you know, then they can be comfortable.
Probably a masked force.
Oh yeah, something sorry.
You know, there's, there's a lot of people in this city that we're trying to protect and
Suzie's the top of that worst.
Well, so I think the best option here, like, uh, the PD can cover when you're appearing at like, specific events? Uh, lucky, lucky you were saying there if you're feeling that you're being threatened in any way? You probably need some security twenty-four seven, right?
Okay.
Yes.
Well, so I think hiring someone who's dedicated to that job would do would be like a much better fit for this.
Right, if I'm doing that, then it's gotta be a business expense, I'm not paying for that out of my own pocket, because that's gonna be expensive.
You can't expect
The only reason that my life is in danger is because of this job.
You can't expect the mayor to pay for that on her own dime.
Absolutely not.
Look at the President of the United States, right? They got, uh, they got a whole secret service.
Secret squad, yeah, what a secret squad going on.
Yeah, yes.
Do you know of any companies or anything that do this sort of, uh, security? Daniel, are you aware or?
Well, I had my own, I had, I had my own security man up there at the church, he's following me around all the time. So I mean oh well, I mean, he, I ain't seen him in a long time, so I got a bone to pick with him, been walking around defensively, yes.
Just suggest Suzie that be called, um, Suzie's Secrets Defence Task, fucked it, sorry.
No, that got a ring to it, right? Because I mean, it lets people know what it is, but it's got a little bit of mistake to it, right? It's got that sacred in there.
The Secret Team of Defence, that's what it wants.
Yeah, Suzie's Secret.
S T D.
That's the perfect name, make a note of that, please.
Of course, uh, what is the full name, sorry? The acronym's so catchy, it's all I can remember.
Suzie's F T D.
Yeah, Suzie's S T D, Suzie's Secret Team of Defence.
Luchuk, if I do interview people for that, would you mind being on the panel with me?
Yeah, I can do that.
I want you to check them out, make sure, you know, you feel like they would be good enough to do the job, work well under pressure, that sort of thing. I feel like you'd be pretty good at interrogating them as police.
Yeah, sure.
Perfect, okay, right, I think that was all from me, so happy to start going around the room. Obviously, we've got the meeting notes, um, on the internet, if you did wanna refer to them, but I can kind of just read for everyone's actions, so Reginald, your name's at the top of the list here.
Yes, before we move on, can I just say Suzie, that you showed great resilience to the threats that you faced.
Oh, thank you Reginald, that's really nice.
No, there's no notes.
Well, you know, Daniel did well as well.
Oh shoot, I, that was terrifying, right? Luchuk, whatever happened to their assholes, right? You catch their ass?
Uh, I think we call
Department of Defence of V D. He threatened Nancy.
Yeah.
Okay, well
There was three, one guy we caught.
Do you know who the last person was, is a warrant out?
No, no.
That's a shame.
Out of three is good.
And I mean, I surely they, they had the books thrown at them, right?
Room for improvement then.
Oh yeah.
Two out of three, bad.
Yeah, room for improvements, yeah.
Right, Reginald, on to your actions.
Yes, can I just say, well, Chuck forgot the snacks, um
Oh yeah, Luchuk, where's my coffee?
Kidnapping, yeah, yeah.
Coffee isn't really snacks, so
We were taking from the avenue.
No.
Great.
And they did the
Can you just write that down, please, Henry?
Well, my priorities again, uh, wood coat back here.
Yeah, I mean, doing a second thing doesn't seem that difficult in my opinion, but
He just had a heart attack, so I didn't want to go to the vending machine and leave him going up the stairs by himself.
Luchuk, and Luchuk was very Oh yes, you know what, I should have just walked, Luchuk, I'm sorry, I, I should have just walked, right?
No, no, Daniel, I've not got an issue with you getting a lift, I've just got, I just take issue with Luchuk not even just No, no, Daniel, I've not got an issue with you getting a lift. I've just got, I just have an issue with Luchok not even just stopping at the, the local shop to get me a sandwich.
No, I've put everybody out.
Yeah, sorry, yes, I'm right. Daniel, Daniel, you okay? Do you need to take a minute?
I'm a hundred percent pleased.
Put some water on the table, please.
I am fine. It was a minor heart defense.
Right, Reginald. So first action on your, your list is to collect a hundred percent of all business licence fees before the next City Council meeting, which is now, so, have you managed to, managed to get them all?
So actually, so I have, I have been doing the rounds. I've visited all, all the business premises. Um, but I've actually encountered an issue that we haven't come across before. And that, um, I have no way of proving to staff at these businesses that I am an official member of the City Council. Of course, I always carry my, uh, it's an ID, but that does not have my occupation on it. So what I've found is that these businesses are not willing to hand over cash in case I'm a fraudster. Which, um, so I was wondering if perhaps we could ask Henry to, um, draft up some form of, a sort of legal document, some, something that we can, you know, make the businesses aware. Reginald will be coming round with this, you know, make your staff aware. Some form of official document to, um,
Get certification or something to show that you are there to collect the fees. Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, to show that, to show that I'm there in an official capacity, uh, because they,
Byage.
You know, the sta- the staff knock it back. Quite often, the, the owners of the business, you know, aren't always available during operating levels. It's, it's often, staff, new recruits, things like that, um.
Did you get any fees? Did you collect anything?
Um, so the main issue is, the main issue is,
I assume he has.
The lack of certificates. So I think that, that would make all the difference if we could, um, get that sorted. That would allow me to, to do my job.
Henry, when you, when you do that, could you just add in a line to say that, um, this should be shown with ID, just because, in case anyone gets their hands on it, you know?
Right, okay.
Um, sorry, Luchok.
All of them refused to pay?
Yes, pretty much. Um, so some businesses, you know, weren't open, you know, I mean, for example, the, uh, the fish and chip, fish and chip shop, Perils, uh, down by the pier.
I haven't seen it open in a while.
Yes, hasn't, hasn't been open in a while.
I haven't had a fish in month.
Burger place, looks like it's going the same way, unfortunately. Um, the mechanics, you know, I spoke to the mechanics, wouldn't accept it. I spoke to the pizza staff, wouldn't accept it. Uh, so, you know, I, I have, I have been doing it rounds, but yeah.
Nancy wouldn't accept it?
Well, no, so that, that's the problem. It's Nancy, I believe, would know who I am, but, uh, it was one of her employees.
Oh, right. Well, I think maybe it's time to issue some funds.
Yes, but basically, as the businesses are expanding, their, uh, staff are unaware.
Well, they don't know who you are, Reginald, because you never fucking collect the business licence fees. Sorry for swearing.
Yes, it's, it's quite ironic a bit, I guess. It's like a, Yes, but,
You could have called me.
Regardless of what has, um, identified, you know, a flaw in the system.
That's fine, we'll, we'll sort that, but I want you to be backdating those fees. I don't want them to think they've got a free month out of you.
Oh, is this a mantle of fame?
Backdated, I mean, I've had to travel there and travel all the way back empty-handed, and now I'm gonna have to travel back again to get the actual money. So of course, the body will be paying up for it.
What, what's the frequency? So, just as Daniel said there, is it monthly or weekly? I can't remember.
Things be, uh,
I thought it was weekly.
I thought it was one time.
I mean, monthly would be help, I think, more, more, um, what's the word? Realistic for, Reginald. Let, let's do baby steps, shall we?
Yes, I mean, sometimes we do come to, to agree, you know, where, um, perhaps a business is freshly opened, we'll go bi-weekly. Um, just to give them a bit of time to, you know, pay in instalments rather than lump sums.
I, I think, let's simplify the process.
Robbie, you still here?
And then you give them a document, say, a little invoice or something like, something just that says you paid on this date. Um, so it's all documented, so when we do any audits or something, we, you know, they've got everything they need, yeah?
Well, that's a fantastic idea, because that will then give the staff, then to show the, the, the business owner, you know, aren't accused of, um, you know, running off with any, any funds.
Okay, so make that an action for Reginald to create a, uh, a document of that.
Okay.
Um, and then talking about audits, uh, so your next action was to complete a financial audit of both PD and EMS to ensure their budgets are being spent correctly.
That was this month?
Hey, Tashka, the captain has never been approached. I don't think people realise he owns a business interesting. Maybe Reginald's too scared.
Oh dear, it looks like him. Yes, uh, you'll not get your review. No, it wasn't about that, it was this month. I don't know what was happening, um, next month. I thought this month's priority was, you know, the business licence fees.
God forbid you had two things to do as part of your role.
Well, hang on, I quite, he, okay, the man has just explained how difficult it is dealing with people trying to get their, your business licences, right? How the hell is he gonna be able to do anything else unless this is enforced, you know, by most of your, um, mains?
Right, okay, so.
Thank you, Daniel. Good point.
Get the document sorted and there's no excuses for next month.
Reginald hilarious, yeah.
As I say, I want double payments.
Yes, yes, and you should have them.
The last action was to meet with Susie and Henry to discuss your performance, which is probably gonna have to be another action at some point, Henry, I'll be honest.
You'd have to come out to the middle of the scene to clear.
Uh, anything you wanna raise, Reginald?
No, I mean, that, that,
When I was set up, yeah.
Mine, I should have wanted to raise there, yeah, and that's, uh, and yes, I'll definitely get on to the, the PD and the EMS. I think it's both bear in mind that those are rather anonymous organisations, lots of money in, lots of money out. Um, so that will take a bit of time, but yes, I'll make sure it's done, make sure it's done thoroughly and, um, yes, I'll get that report to you.
You know when Tony Soprano's made to take his shoes off and he nearly collapses?
Uh, right, the next person to be on the agenda was Orion. Obviously, Orion can't be with us today. Um, so I'll just go with through their actions in case anybody knows where they're up to. So sampling the water at Legion Park, that happened on the same day, right?
Yes.
And it wasn't blood, I'm assuming?
Well, we didn't, we didn't, hang on, there might have been blood in it, we don't know, but it, it appears that it's at least mostly water.
Okay. I've also, um, I've also heard that they've recruited another GP in the hospital, which is good, uh, Dr Malone. And,
Fantastic.
Yeah, I think there was another, an older paramedic, I thought, is it Bartholomew or something? Um, but yeah, it's good that we've got a few more, more members of EMS.
When?
Fantastic.
When were they hired?
Uh, this was a couple of weeks ago, I think now. I think they're still finding their feet a little bit.
Okay. Don't think I've met them.
Yeah, well, I've, I've heard that Dr Malone's incredibly good, so great bedside manner.
I ain't met this Malone, I met this old man though.
Any, uh, any thoughts? Any good?
It's always good to have doctors.
Exactly.
He gets, I'm pretty sure he uses a walking cane.
That's fine. I mean, yeah, it's probably, it probably begs the question, you know, should he be driving around on his own?
Yes.
If he's got a patient, how's he supposed to do everything?
Yes, right. And I mean, what happens after five, what happens after five P M? When he probably goes to sleep, right? Goes, gets his early bird and goes to sleep.
Well, it's, uh, still a work in progress, the hospital. I think it's, it's been hard to retain staff, so.
Yeah, yes.
We're trying our best. I know, we've still got other people, I think Bert's still there, the physiotherapist, um, obviously Orion.
Yes.
Is there anyone I missed there?
Oh, well, no. Scrap date.
Yeah. So the next thing was completing an individual review and autopsy around Gary Pillock's death. Has there been any, because there was something about medical negligence there. Has there been any updates on that from anyone?
Uh, no, there's not been any doctors around that can do that yet.
Okay. Just remind me, Gary Pillock, who, who was Gary Pillock? I don't think I've ever met, met them.
Who was he? He was, um,
Nobody really seems to know.
I don't know, like, we arrested him a few times, but I don't really know much about him.
I mean, do we just all agree as a council that this one just, we just, you know, forget about it?
Well, nobody gives us,
Remember him, right? If we don't know him, then.
Yeah.
He ain't gonna be me.
The concern was more about the doctor that treated her rather than Gary himself, you know, because,
Yeah.
You know, maybe you get injured and then,
Who was that?
By the same doctor and then, he lets you die. He was, what, the doctor?
Yeah, he was the doctor.
Uh,
I remember him telling me that boat man poked his eye out, some shit like that.
That's like Drew something?
Oh, Drew Peacock?
Yes.
Hell of an E M A, yes, hell of a man.
Um,
I've not seen him in the hospital for a while.
I ain't seen the man for over a month, right? But, uh, I don't know.
He's actually got a warrant on him.
Oh, okay, well.
What the hell, fool?
Uh, attempted murder.
Oh, no bullshit. Bullshit, no.
We saw it happen.
No, no.
We saw it happen.
Okay, can I just make a suggestion? If there's already a warrant out for a separate issue, clearly he's gonna get his medical licence taken off him for that.
That's a good point, yeah.
No, no, he's a hell of an E M A, yes.
Daniel, let's just put this matter to bed from a city council perspective in terms of this medical negligence, because all that's gonna do is make more paperwork for everyone. It's gonna eat into our budget. And to be honest, no one seems to really know who Gary, no one seems to be screaming for us to get this injustice, you know, this wrong writing.
This is what I was gonna say. Out of everybody who's died recently, and let me tell you, there's been a lot of people dying. Ain't nobody come to me about a Gary Pillock funeral, right? He ain't gonna be missed. Let's just pretend like, you know, he, uh, I know she'd moved. Everybody, everything goes back to normal, right?
It would just be nice to have just a simple, quiet death, to be honest.
Well, his woes, it, it couldn't have been simpler, it couldn't have been quieter. Who's to know he even died? You see what I mean? Who, who's to sigh, right? You see what I mean?
Have any, everyone in favour of just squashing the medical negligence investigation and moving on with our lives? Say hi.
What are you? Ah.
No, I've already forgotten.
Ah, a hundred times, can't wait a hundred times, right?
Yes, here, here.
Perfect. Oh, that's very rare that we get everyone agreeing. That's great. Okay. Um, conduct a health check on Nancy Pickles following Daniel's claims that she's possessed by a demon.
Uh, well, it's complicated.
Okay.
Yes.
How?
Well.
Yes, probably, uh, now's probably your time to say.
Well, well, I mean,
What?
Okay, it hit, just, uh, ha- hang on. It ain't gonna, I mean, it ain't, uh, the big deal, right? She seems to think that me worrying about her is some kind of, uh, what she call it, uh, harassment, right? So she's suing me. And I mean, I've just, I've just tried to ca- care for that later, that's all. And I've tried to raise him with her and I've, I've tried to just be friends with her again.
What the hell is going on?
No, I'm fine, right?
Listen, maybe, should we park, Henry?
It's just all this trash.
Yeah, okay, Daniel, let's just, let's just not go there for now. Let's just park this one out. We can pick up about this later, okay?
Yeah, it's right. I mean, she, she, you know, I ain't nothing worried about her. She, I got the best law in town, don't you worry about that.
Okay, right. The next one is conducting evaluation.
Yes, of course.
Yes, Susan, continue.
Conduct an evaluation on Daniel to ensure he is currently fit for work.
Oh, ah, well, that's a different issue than, than what's happened just now.
Yeah, that was more about his mental state, right? And just, yeah.
Well, on this now, it's probably both.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm, wild. No, it's, um, I'm absolutely one hundred percent.
Yes, yeah, I, I, I actually agree with the fellow, um, you know, it's a late cough.
Yeah, I mean, just, just make sure you go back to see the doctor after this, okay? Because you have been coughing quite a lot in this meeting and,
It's something going around.
Okay. Um, right, next one. Check the freezer in the morgue is working. I guess we can just move that on to next, the next meeting.
It was working. And for, I'm, I'm pretty sure I heard it was working.
Fantastic news.
Perfect. Um, right, over to you, Luchok. Uh, I guess, shall we do any updates first? Have you got any updates for us?
Um, well, obviously Hammer Guy is dead, so that issue has been sorted. I think everyone's happy with this.
We ticked off the list.
Hallelujah.
Uh, something strange that came up in the community meeting at the church yesterday is that it seems everyone in the city has been going into bins to look for stuff.
Very strange.
Which, it's not exactly, looking in a bin is not illegal by itself, but if it's like on someone's property, you know, like if it's a business and someone's looking at their bins, then that could be a problem. Uh, but everyone was talking about it as if it's like a, a normal thing.
What do you think's driving that behaviour?
I don't understand. They, they say, they're saying the,
Social media.
In the bins. And there's this rumour going around that there's a serial killer, but there's, so if you hear that.
The origami killer, right?
What? That, that sounds awful. Sounds terrifying.
It's ridiculous, it's ridiculous, right?
There is no, we, I'm not sure where people are getting that from, but there is, there's not been anyone that's dead. Well, aside from multiple people that died, but we know how they died, right?
Right.
There's nobody has been killed.
Well, we don't know how Gary Pillock died.
Well, he wasn't folded into a crime, right?
He fell off a bridge.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, there's not been, like, any bodies found or any messages from a killer or anything at all to indicate that there is a serial killer. But, but some people seem to believe so, but it, it's not true.
Okay, yes, that's just, just rabble, nothing substantial.
Yeah, so if you, if you do hear about this, you know, it's just, it's not really that.
There's two, there, there's two different theories at work here. There's one that, uh, well, okay. There's somebody going around making mediocre origami, putting it in the bins, right? And because people are checking the bins, they're finding all these different origamis. And people are making like, uh, you know, they're like, oh, I'm a, I'm collecting, I wanna catch everyone, some shit like that. And, uh, so they think there's some kind, and one of the people came to the community meeting, he's like, we, who is this? Like, his, his art is precious more or less. So they think there's some kind of Banksy wannabe going around throwing his, his artwork into bins for people to find. So it's,
It's a very strange place to, uh,
Yeah, I mean, is that a crime? Is that a crime?
Has anyone talked to Tom about this?
No, he's probably just, I mean, he probably does it while he's, uh, you know, on a, on a work hole or something, then just chucks it in the bin. It's such a known, I mean, it's a bit of paper folded up. Who cares?
For, for the bin itself, like the random bins around the place are, that is not a crime. Uh, let's say somewhat, like, I'm sure you guys throw stuff in the bin outside the building here. Uh, it might have some things that you don't want people looking through. And then you go and search your bins. It's not, um,
Oh, do you shred all the, all the sensitive things?
That, we, we do that in the PD, so make sure you're, okay, that's good.
Right, okay, so it's more or less like government buildings where it might be more illegal.
Yeah, and also, they, they've all mentioned being attacked by rats and being bit by rats.
Do they have a rat problem in the city?
It sounds like it. Like, they're living in the bins. And there's concern that this might become a health issue at some point, so.
Who the fuck is Tom? You need him?
Well, you know, you're always,
Do we need to get some people about rat slay involved?
Also, you can, you can, you can talk to Tom, yeah.
I, I feel like, you know, is, is, isn't it a fact that you're always a couple of metres away from a rat or a few metres away from a rat all the time?
Is there a rat here?
What?
No, well, I'm just saying, maybe I, I'm pretty sure. No, well, I'm just saying maybe I, I'm pretty sure that's something I've heard.
Well, they carry the plague, right? That's what spread the plague back in our, the, the, the dark ages, right? So you gotta vouch out for. And there's a, you know, that, I mean, there'd be uh, medical waste in these things. But, but yeah, I mean, I don't get why people, I'm up with the charcoal this one.
Looking in the hospital bins, that could be very dangerous.
Yeah, yes.
Do we need to add in a new, a new law though? To say, just, just because it's a bit mingin', can we not just make a new laws to say, stop scavenging from the bins?
Well, I mean, it's a bit, um, you know, we do say recycle, reuse, what, whatever, whatever, you know, um.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a health and safety issue if there's rats in the bins.
People do it for food as well, right? I know people who are.
Who eat from the bins?
Yeah, they eat food. No, please, don't, don't advocate for, for the devil, please.
What I'm saying is, um, if these people are removing food from the bins, that's essentially stealing food from the rat's plate. You know, I mean, I mean, it could actually be helping the problem. Imagine if these people weren't emptying the bins.
Starve the riots.
Think about how big the rat problem could be then.
Well, then they'd be eating the riots, right? And then we won't have a rat problem. Maybe we should mandate uh homeless people eat riots. That'd take care of both problems, right? Holy shit.
I mean, that feels a bit unethical.
But it's mate, it's mate.
For a godly man like yourself, that's very unethical.
It's like a sausage when you think about it with teeth. You could just rip a mate out.
Listen, listen, I, I think the best, the best course of action here is we need to speak to Tom about how we manage the rat problem.
Yeah, yes.
Just, um, off the top of my head, we could, um, rather than, you know, eating the rats as rats, you know. What about tournament hot dogs? Hot dogs are very palatable.
Oh, hot, hot riots, right?
Just, just grind them up, you know, it's, it's just meat.
Yeah, he's wrapping them in uh, wrap them in discarded uh, chippy bags or something, right?
Oh, Daniel, so you're telling me you would eat a rat, would you?
I wouldn't eat a rat, are you crazy? But I mean, I ain't, I ain't uh, I can afford the old sandwich or two, right?
But it doesn't sound like the people are doing this because they don't have the money. It sounds like people are doing this for bits of paper.
Well, I'm talking about people can't afford it, right? People are otherwise turning the crime.
This isn't that type of issue. This is a.
All right.
Yeah.
Oh, right, okay, well. This, I mean.
This is a rich person's problem.
Well, if they going through beans and they ain't robbing banks, I mean, you know, put cheesy poison.
Henry, thoughts on a law, a law being created around this?
Uh, it seems maybe a bit uh, excessive, right? I feel like if Tom can just deal with the situation as he's supposed to, then there shouldn't need to be a law.
Hmm, okay.
I mean, if, if we were going to make a law, should it not be that paper should not be in the bin? The paper should be recycled, surely. I mean, I mean, do you remember all those business proposals? One of the key questions we always asked was waste management, you know. Will you be recycling? That, that was a key, key sort of promise there.
Well, part, part of what you said here is, if people are eating out the bins and they're not paying money to businesses, which is affecting our economy, so do we have to introduce a bin tax?
Oh, shoot, right, for every baggo.
Why don't we make them, um, coin operated?
Sorry, Henry and uh, Luchuk.
They're done with trias or what?
Are you texting each other?
Uh, taking notes in the meeting.
Okay.
It's just a, it's a quick work thing. I need to uh, send a message.
So how do we, I mean, okay, we got this rat problem, right? How do we uh, how do we recycle riots? You know, okay, we can't force people to eat them, fine. What do we do with them?
Well, coin operated bins, as I said.
I ain't gonna fix it.
People put money in the bins. Rats do not have money. Rats will not be able to access the bins.
They'll find a way in.
I have a suggestion.
They'll die it.
We need to introduce more cats into the city. That's what we need to do.
Oh, yeah, yes.
We need to populate the city with cats.
Yeah, yes.
Can we please make that an action, please?
Wouldn't we need to also increase the population of dogs to keep things balanced?
Uh, an action for who?
No.
Uh, action for who, who does this belong to? Put it for me for now and I'll think about it.
Right, very well.
I'll get my hands on some cats.
So then, okay. Cats run late calls, all the rats are dead. Then we got a bunch of wild cats on our hands, nothing to eat, then bolt.
That doesn't sound like a problem to me. They'll always have things to eat out of the bins.
Cat, hot dogs perhaps?
I, I mean, uh, cats would have more, I'd know. It's like uh, you know, cats are too, cats are too uh, likable, right, to eat.
Yes, but by the time, you know, you bought them in the store, they would, um, they'd be in the form of a hot dog.
Oh, no, I thought you said feed the cats hot dogs. I didn't think you said make the cats into hot dogs. No.
He's saying make them into hot dogs, right? I don't know if I wanna.
Right, we're moving on now because this is very upsetting to me.
I don't wanna eat a cat, right? Although, I mean, with the, if enough sparse herbs and sparses, she.
Daniel.
Okay, okay, Daniel. Let's uh, let me jump over now.
Yes, of course.
Alright, so there are, there are a bunch of things that we need uh money for at the P D this month, actually. Uh, now keep in mind that last meeting, we haven't asked for anything.
Zero.
Right.
So take that into consideration as well. Uh, so I do have a list of uh of things, actually, so. Yes, uh, so first of all, uh, while we were trying to catch that hammer guy, all our cars, the P D have received like extensive damage from being hit by a hammer multiple times. A car exploded, actually. Don't know what the hammer was made out of, but uh, one of them got hammered and then exploded. So we've had to spend a lot of money on car repairs during like the last few weeks because of that. Uh, which was worse in the end, obviously, because, you know, the issue has been solved.
Right?
Uh, the second thing is that some of the people that we've hired recently, that finished their training, became constables, so we need to pay them their uh training and bonus thing.
Fucking hell, are we still doing that?
Yeah, we've not really cancelled it, so there's that.
How much was that each?
Uh, I believe it was uh, five or ten thousand. You can check the poster again for each person. Uh, but also, uh, we're gonna be holding a training day tomorrow to get everybody that's joined the P D recently up to speed about like certain things. And we've received a few applications, actually. So we're gonna be hiring at least two new people soon.
Excellent.
So we're gonna need money for, you know, their training and their bonus and their salary and all that. Um, oh, and um, you know, winter. Yeah, oh, this is more, yeah, winter, winter is obviously coming up. It's getting colder, so we're gonna need to get jackets for the P D, you know, obviously, like everyone in the, all the constables are always patrolling. Everyone is the warm in their, in their house or in their car or in their business. Uh, officers have to be going around chasing criminals uh, in the cold, you know, rain and snow and all that. So we're gonna be needing uh, to get uh, police jackets for everybody in the P D. Um.
Gee whiz.
Yeah. So I think I've got cases all that to be a hundred and fifty thousand?
Okay, can I just, I could get you five, I could get you four, five full-time guards for myself and Mr, Mrs Suzie, but for half that.
Daniel, take your coat off. You're looking, you look like you're really.
I'm actually freezing. Is anybody, can we, is anybody else cold?
No.
No.
It's freezing.
No, no, I'm alright.
Shoot, alright. No, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Ten star jumps generates some body heat.
No, no, I need to uh.
Uh, maybe, maybe not an extreme exercise after.
I need to take it easy, right?
His injuries.
Just if I could get a blanket or something.
A blanket, uh.
Could I get a blanket?
Reginald, give him your jacket.
Oh, right.
Oh, shoot, is that alright? You just kinda sit it over my shoulders.
Yeah, it's no problem, yeah.
Yeah, so it's good, I was just in first. Um, yep.
Sorry, I do excuse myself. Sorry about that.
Got any more in the tank?
No, no, I'm fine.
Right, yeah. Need more then.
Oh. Oh, thank you. Oh, that's lovely.
Yeah, but I don't blame you. Uh, so, Luchuk, uh.
Thank you so.
A hundred and fifty thousand is just not happening, I'm afraid. So you're gonna have to prioritise what you, you need. What's the, what are the top two important things? The jackets, right?
The um, well, the car repairs as well, so expensive. I mean, we can, I, I think if, if we take it down to a hundred thousand, we can maybe delay the bonuses for the new hires.
I don't, I don't think I've, I've got that, I might.
I have my shift as well.
Oh, shoot, thank you.
Look, I'm gonna have to do some calculations, okay? I'll like, you know, how much we can agree.
Your body heat is uh, still present on the, on the cloud and thank you.
Reginald, your veins in your arms are disgusting. Sit down.
Well, I mean, uh, the man's a very good shape, you know, that's just uh, what do they call a vascular, right? He's very vascular. Hello.
I said plenty of oxygen getting to the brain.
Your nipples are barely visible.
I'm, I'm pretty warm right now, um, with things cooling down.
Can we get back on topic, please?
Sorry, Henry.
Little razor sharp raisins.
Right, Henry, um, just put P D budget to be confirmed, okay?
Okay.
Um, so I'd, I'd actually like Daniel's um, opinion on this. The next action for you, Luchuk, was restore the public's trust in the police force.
Yes.
Did something happen to the trust or?
Okay, bye bye.
Well, wasn't there a lot of deaths in one go and people were questioning? I think the hammer guy didn't really help much. Um, but yeah, don't get defensive, Luchuk. Let's just hear what, let's just hear what Daniel has to say, okay?
Right.
Alright, okay, well, uh. So uh, uh, okay, my task was to uh, restore confidence in the police, right?
I know, that was Luchuk's action, but I guess you're probably gonna be the best person to gauge what that response has been like.
Sorry, I misspoke. I'm, I was the one to ga, to gauge confidence in the police, which is what I've done.
Oh, you have? You have, you've gauged it already?
I've gauged it. Well, I've gauged it up to the, up to today.
Okay, and?
Well, no complaints, right? I ain't heard no complaints.
Wonderful.
Let's hope.
I don't think I have. Hang on.
What?
Well, where we, uh, Norrie had died, right? By the time we had the last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, people were quite upset about that.
Yeah, that was, that was before.
Yes.
Actually, nobody has died since that meeting.
No, that ain't true.
Except the, the, the hammer, right?
Drake.
Was that?
Was that before or after?
Maybe it was after.
I feel like it was after.
Okay, one, one person died.
I ain't, police ain't had nothing to do with that.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Wonderful. That's uh, that's great. It's good to have something ticked off as a successful once.
Perfect. Uh, and then the last action for you, Luchuk, we speak to Plonker about Woodcocks' claims of the Satanic Church in Leighton Park. Of a, sorry, Satanic Church in Leighton Park, along with his brother rising from the dead. Sorry to bring this up, Daniel.
No, I'd like him to talk about more.
The church in the park. And what we found out is that it was uh, part of the Halloween decoration for.
Oh, okay, I didn't realise.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it was like this haunted house in the park.
Oh, it's just the decoration, just the decoration, right? There was nothing fishy going on, no portal to hell, nothing like that.
A bird, did you see a bird? No, there, it was like a.
I've seen my brother, oh, okay, alright. Yeah, it's right.
Yeah, like, there's some nice lighting inside.
Yeah, it's Ouija Bolt that spoke to you from the beyond, yes.
Oh, Ouija boards are fun. I've done one of those before. I've hurt one of my dead cats before.
Oh, and I hope you realise that cat is in hell now. I mean, I don't, I mean.
Don't be stupid, Daniel.
Yes, perhaps it's better to, there ain't nothing that could be done. You can't undo that. Well, matter of fact, I could get your cat out of hell for ten grand, but anyway.
Right, okay, Daniel, whatever.
There was a, there was a gas leak.
There was a gas leak. That makes so much more sense. Are we sure there is a still gas leak that has affected Daniel at the moment?
No, what do you, no. What do you mind? Listen, listen, right?
He did have a heart attack yesterday, to be fair.
Okay, alright, how about this?
I've heard it about ten times already.
I don't need this kind of stress around there. Now you, now, listen to my place, right? There is a problem with police, okay? There is.
Is there?
There is, right? That, okay, well, listen to this, don't say it. That pesky Plonker, right? He's been on me and on me and on me. And finally, he comes back to me, he's talking about uh, my employees. This is a, this is very serious, right? He's, he was trying to say that uh, Drake had orchestrated this, this amazing uh, this unreal plan where they, where he was working with somebody to pretend that my brother had uh, who made up my brother, first of all, that I ain't got, he came up seeing me, he's like, oh, you ain't got no brother. Like he was happy to tell me, right? Oh, you ain't got no brother, he never died and uh, it was old Drake. Do you believe that? Yeah, yes. So yes, there is a problem with one of your offices, it's Plonker.
It's not a problem, it's uh. Have you ever seen any I D from your brother?
I've seen, I looked the man in his face, I hugged the man.
We said you were hamper, thinking your brother had died and now apparently it might not even be true. It might be that you never had a brother all along.
If close, it's true, and matter of fact.
At the hospital might have been a mannequin.
Oh my god.
Oh, yeah, it's, are you hearing this, Mayo? My twin brother.
I certainly am, I certainly am. Listen, Daniel, do you know what's actually funny is the first action on your list is to consent to an evaluation by arriving.
None of this is funny.
So after, after this meeting, I want you to go straight back to the hospital, I'll be assessed.
Do not need this stress right now. I had a heart attack. Yes, I did. I had a heart attack, Mayim. How many heart attacks you had?
Listen, I think you probably best take a week off.
That means zero.
Take the week off, Daniel.
A week off. I should add an extra week on to the next week. You double it up, right?
Your next action, Daniel, was to organise a community engagement event before the next city council meeting.
Yeah, it's right. Well, I have had four. I'm doing one weekly.
Right, and what is it? How's it going?
Up there at the church, it's a community meeting where people can come and speak their mind. I got a longer list of things here. Excuse me, what was that, Henry?
Oh, you just said, that's wonderful. It's good that it's been a success.
Oh, people love it, right?
Oh, why don't you get Reginald to attend the next one and, and just introduce himself as a business licence officer? That might be a good way to get in front of people.
Oh, yes, that's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a fantastic idea and, and I'd love to be there.
Perfect. Oh, hello, oh god.
Alright. Hello.
Oh, yes, hello.
You're, you're hard piercing, if, what is that?
You're, you're hard piercing, if, what is that?
I suppose you've got a jacket there in that, uh, box.
How'd you find, mate?
I didn't have a jacket. I don't want to do it. Eh.
Alright.
Aye, eh, this is for you, we've got.
Yes, right. I mean, I didn't hold nothing.
It's a big box?
What is it?
You've been ordering personal things to the.
No, no.
Eh, I think there's some pacemakers in here.
Pacemaker? I, I don't, I didn't order these, right?
Is this a prank or?
Are you sure?
I did not, oh, no. No, it, they must have said, uh, it must be for the hospital, right? What am I gonna do with a, uh, a pacemaker?
Eh, they say DIY. Eh, don't talk about my explosion, man, it's pure traumatic.
Explosion? I was everywhere, did it singe all your hair off?
Aye, did you find David true?
No, no, he's, he's not been seen since then. Well, we need to speak to him first to find your wife, so.
What happened to your wife?
So this is actually quite, uh, important business. Can you, uh, deliver your package and, uh, be on your way?
Oh, is my wife not important to you?
Uh, not in the context of it, no, this is an arrangement.
We don't even know your wife. Who the hell's your wife?
What, you mean, here's your wife?
This label, it says bulk pacemaker whilst. It's right, that, listen, that, it ain't mine. Ain't mine, right? Last time you delivered something to me, it was filled with, uh, well, the sex toys.
Oh, is it? Jesus Christ.
No, no, please.
I think it was for Nancy, to be honest, but eh.
She forced me to take it, right? Oh, shoot, I need to, I didn't eat. I need to mention that to my.
To take sex toys.
I need to mention that to my lawyer. She made me take a box full of sex toys, right?
Or he'd take a box and eh, the way you said that could mean something else. Anyway, take these pacemakers, right?
No, not a box full, I mean, you know, like a carton, like a, uh, package full, right?
I think it's a DIY. Eh, say, you can do the sale.
I can't accept this, right? You, send it up to, uh, send it up to Peel Box.
Right.
I don't need a pacemaker.
Know how that works.
Well, I'm redirecting it, right?
Daniel, just accept it and so we can get on with it.
Oh, give me the dang box.
Mate, for fuck's sake. Just trying to do my job, for fuck's sake.
Thank you for your service, of course.
We're trying to do our job. Bold asshole.
Daniel, you can't be ordering things to City Hall.
I didn't order, what am I gonna do with a box full of fucking pacemakers? I'm gonna, I'm gonna slip my chest open.
I'm gonna take a picture of your feet.
You won't?
I need to take a picture of your feet, company policy.
Oh, here we go. And I'm the one with the foot fetish.
Are you?
No, no. Okay, is it gone?
Just put it on the shelf, put it on the shelf.
I'm gonna take these into the bathroom and flush each one of them one by one. Just to prove a point.
No, no, no.
Oh, shoot, yes.
Don't fuck the plumbing up, goodness sake.
I'm gonna just harden in this, in this cabinet here.
Don't even know a plumber in this town, you know?
Alright, I'll put it inside that cabinet here.
Well, they wanted the meeting, actually.
A plumber?
Yeah.
Oh, yay, you're right.
I wanted to get them, I wanted to hire them to fix the, uh, the pipe in the PD, but they had to leave.
Yes. Irishman or something.
Oh.
We'd have paid them pretty well as well.
Oh, right. Well, that's, that's good. Hopefully, you know, you see him again.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, look like a Samma Davis Junior.
Okay, well, moving on, um.
Big nose, big moustache. Yes.
Big nose. Okay, um.
You know what, yeah, alright.
These meetings, and so you said there's been a lot of, a lot of information that you've garnered from them, so what's the, can you just give us like the top three key points?
Top three?
Yeah, what, what keeps coming up the most?
Alright, uh. What comes up the most is, uh, people, okay. Hey, hey, congratulations. Uh, and. Okay, there was one man who wanted to increase the, uh, speed limit, right? In the town. He's a car man, works on cars. And, uh, he wants to increase it by quite a load. Can you recall what that number was, Luchuk? It was like nine a mile an hour or something, right? Round the town?
That's something very unreasonable.
Yes, that's quite ridiculous, surely.
It's only just been increased.
Listen, I told him I'd bring it up.
Seventy wasn't fast enough.
Oh, god. Just because they spend lots of money on making their cars as fast as possible, doesn't mean that we then need to increase the speed limit so they get the most use out of it. They need to find somewhere appropriate to go those stupid speeds.
I think that, you know, that's, uh, we were trying to explain that to him, right? And, uh, I don't know. I don't know if he got it, right? I, I, I mean, I'll tell him, I mentioned, I'll tell him it was shut down, just as I suspected.
I mean, do we have a space for people to ri- like drive around, like maniacs?
Well, there's a drag strip up north, ain't there?
Where?
I think it's up there somewhere, up at, uh, shoot, uh. I wanna say, uh, up in, uh, Sandershawls, perhaps.
No, that I've seen.
I really do feel like there is, maybe up at Grape Seed.
Okay, well, maybe that can be an action point then.
Talking about, uh, airport, are you?
No, no, I'm, I'm quite, I'm pretty sure I've seen one in this city.
There is, there's like a little racetrack behind the casino.
Yeah, so some sort of track next, not far from, um, not far from the prison, right?
Same one on a different city.
Some sort of rally track, maybe they could use that.
Yeah, and there's that circle one behind the casino as well.
Well, what about the airport, right? We get very few flights coming in and out.
No. You can't have cars driving into the airport.
No, that's ridiculous.
Well, you should have seen everybody going in there in the scavenger hunt. People was flying all over the pla- you know, driving all over the place.
Right, well.
I think that was a mistake, cause like, it was made by myself, so I wouldn't have sent them into.
I know, but one of them was, uh, very aeronautical related and it turned out it was rubbing tug straight or something. And, uh, everybody thought a man.
Getting a bit off track, getting a bit off track.
Yes, right.
What, what are the other two things?
When you respond, when you respond to the person who raised that, just tell them to go to either the racetrack or the casino or the place you suggested and that is perfectly legal, okay?
Alright.
They can have at it there.
Alright, unlimited speeds.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, next item. It, well, it relates back to the, this, uh, origami killer. The, uh, one man who's, who's quite keen on collecting these origami pieces thinks, uh, we need to, uh, create an origami bigger than the church and put it in some kind of glass case for everybody to see. Oh, shit, excuse me. I gotta call you back, I'm in a maiden. Hello?
Hello?
I gotta call you back, I'm in a maiden.
O- o- okay, okay, no, no worries, sure.
Alright, bye bye now. I do apologise. Excuse me?
Who was that?
Oh, just, uh, just, uh, somebody, uh, I ain't show.
Okay.
Uh, pl- please continue, Daniel. Uh, did you say about someone requesting artwork on the church?
No, no, they wanted, they, I, I don't know where they wanted exactly. They just wanted to somewhere where everybody can see. They're obsessed with these bin origamis.
Did, did you say it needs to be as big as the church?
I think he said it needed to be bigger.
Right, okay, do you have, do, are all of these going to be so ridiculous?
Hmm.
No, no. These are things I told the people I'd come and talk to you all about. What's the point of running these maidens if I, if I can't bring the topics here?
Which really common sense comes in somewhere, Daniel.
How, how would you make that?
E- exactly. No, no, I, I, I know it ain't practical, Rob. I just told the man I'd bring it up.
Okay, it's rejected.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Tell them you've looked for paper, we couldn't find one big enough.
It can't, it could go to be so thick that you wouldn't even be able to bend it in a shape, right? Think about that.
I thought about it, the idea rejected, next.
It'd work as if it was a statue.
Luchuk, please.
Yes, no, what I'm saying is think about how big the paper's got. I'm not saying think about, uh, allowing it, I'm saying think about the practicality of it, right? Just there's a mental exercise.
And the glass case bigger than the church.
Glass, can you give me a break, right?
I'm mentally exhausted thinking about it, to be honest. So what was your next point? Your final point?
Oh, shoot, my final point? I can't remember any good ones. Yes, right, uh, taxes, right?
Right.
What then?
Well, that was a rise, the issue of taxes. Some people, some people, some people are happy, some people aren't.
Okay, that doesn't seem like an issue to me.
Alright, well, uh. Oh, what else is?
Do you still want them raised?
I floated the idea of having them raised.
How did that go?
It's hard to tell, right? I was trying to convince everybody how important taxes was. And, uh, I don't know. There was a dead plumber man was, was, uh, kinda came around to the idea. Cause he was the one.
Doing your job.
He was the one who raised the, uh, the issue of that taxes should be, uh, I forget, minimised or, or, uh, completely done away with.
Hmm.
And, uh, I was like, no, listen, it's got, it's important, right? Very important for, you know, all these reasons. Every single, every single topic that was raised after that basically proved how important it was.
Hmm. They're already very low.
How important taxes were, excuse me?
They're already quite low.
Well, I mean, if we had higher taxes, we could, we could, uh, you know, give me a budget for having psych.
What do you need a budget for?
What do I need a budget for? Says a man who's getting a hundred grand.
Well, no, no one's agreed a hundred grand yet, okay?
Well, I've, I've explained.
Well, he wanted a hundred and fifty for, for, so you could stay warm in the cold weather?
And protect all of you while doing so, and fix all the cars that have been damaged and hire new people. I've, I've already explained my side of it.
Yes.
My car's been damaged.
But you can.
I could hire some more people.
Well, no, you can, as you've proved already, you can raise quite a bit of money by holding fundraisers.
Well, yes, we will be having another fundraiser, matter of fact.
See, so you don't need a budget.
That money ain't for me.
What, what the budget would be for you?
Well, not, well, I, I wouldn't mind a little pie bump. I'm trying to save up for a house. I'm simply living in that apartment, I don't got no running boulder.
This is appropriate conversation for this meeting.
No, I don't think so.
Well, I need a house, I need applies to.
Can you do an order, please, Henry?
FPRA is all good, you know, I, I would make one as well.
Yes. Why don't we just go have pie rises, right? Increase taxes.
More enthusiastic, Henry.
Order?
Oh, of course.
Yes, um, so, yeah, you aren't getting a budget, okay? Um, the last point was to behave in the appropriate manner expected of a city council member. Have you been in trouble since?
My?
Yes.
Absolutely not.
Nothing in the soc- on social media, in the headlines about your behaviour at all?
Well, apart from the regular kind of, you know.
Just a picture of your buttocks on the social media, that's all I've seen so far.
Picture my buttocks? What do you fucking mind?
What, what is it? Could you, could you explain your clothing further? What the hell is going on there?
Which, what are you talking about? Where are you?
Have, have a look on, on the birdie.
I can see what you had for lunch.
Oh, in the, uh, where I'm on the hospital bed, wearing the blue pants and the. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, not, um, that top.
What? What are all these tweets about Donkey for mayor? What are you doing at these meetings, Daniel?
Oh, they're just, they're, they like to get a little, uh, rambunctious, right?
I think it's actually missing.
Oh, no.
For god's sake.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's another one we can just sweep under the carpet.
No, we're actually reading.
Yes.
No, 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 Luchuk, don't waste your time, good riddance.
Mayim, he ain't never become a mayo. I know he's, you know, sending his flans out.
It just helps me, isn't it?
We have reason to believe he might have been attacked, so.
Oh, no. The man who, who constantly attacks me? Got attacked? Oh, no. Oh, the poor man.
There's blood.
Sounds like part of the life of a free range donkey.
Yeah, alright.
Yes. Oh, gone, but, uh, not forgotten, uh, well.
Ah, donkey who?
Yeah, donkey who, right.
Luchuk, why, why are you so invested in donkey?
That's a good question.
Well, invested the same amount as I would be if, like, anybody else was missing.
Right.
Even more than if I was missing?
You're not missing.
But what if I was missing? Would you care more or the sign?
I would care equally.
No, no. That hurts my feelings, Luchuk.
It's, it's not, it's not just missing. Like I said, we, we came across a scene with a lot of blood. So.
Oh, no.
Might have been more to it as well.
So when you said there haven't been any deaths, so has been a potential another death?
Well, we don't, we don't really know yet. It's ongoing investigation.
Unsolved mystery, right? Mystery of the dawn and missing donkey man.
Given he seems to be so popular, you do need to resolve that as soon as possible if you want to keep the trust with the public, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, right, uh, Henry, anything from you? I don't think you had any actions from the last meeting, but.
No, nothing's been alright, the staff.
Yeah, what other issues there were from the community meeting?
That, that, that's going to be fine.
I should have written that shit down.
Process is going as it should.
Great, so the only action for you then is about that, uh, document that Reginald mentioned, isn't it?
Yes, I'll get something written up so you can show it to people and, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Play, but that, that in conjunction with you showing up at one of these, uh, these meetings, the father there's having, there should be fine.
Do you think I should attend one of these meetings at some point? And I'm a bit unsure.
I think y'all, y- y'all should, right?
What's your curriculums sorted, maybe?
Maybe we could do one of those, like, um, what, do you know when they all sit on those tall stools with microphones in their hand and then people just ask questions to the panel?
Like a press conference?
Yeah, maybe we could do a bit of a panel at the church.
Oh, yeah, that'd be wonderful, right? Yes, people could come and Q and I.
Yeah. Might make us more approachable.
You think the church would be a good idea for, for that kind of location? Depends how many people show up, I suppose. How many people can your church hold?
Oh, hundreds, right? But I mean, it, there's one, uh, the way we do it is people come up to the, uh, altar, right? So, uh, what we'd have to do if there's several of us, we'd have to stand in front and each of us pass around the microphone, right? And we would have to stand. We may be able to put some seed in.
Some chairs, though.
Some chairs, there may be a, a, a desk with water bottles and, uh, I don't know, dinases or something like that, right?
Oh, very nice, yeah.
Potentially, Daniel, since you seem to, um, have a good relationship with, uh, the people who turn up to these, these meetings, perhaps you could, um,
vet the candidates before they answer questions, you know?
Oh, yes, yes.
Plant some questions in, you know, make us look good.
Of course, yes. Leave it to me.
Yeah, you let us know a date for that.
All right.
I think that would be good. Let's do it after my glow up then and we'll see how that goes down.
Oh, yeah, it's right. We could have the bike uh dip.
Security is put in place, yes?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. I'm getting carried away. Yes, I do need security. I suppose if the trucks with me on the panel, though, I'll feel safer.
Multiple, multiple people from the PDL was present at those.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Right.
I always feel very safe. And I mean, it's it's the church, right? It's, I mean, nothing really can go wrong in inside them doors.
Okay, but Daniel, I want this to be a big occasion, okay? I want you to make it a bit glamorous. You know, it is the city council after all. We're not just some drab.
All right.
People who meet every now and then to discuss budgets, you know?
Yes, I'm gonna need a budget.
Okay, how much do you think you're gonna need for that?
Well, camera hire, crew hire, grind screen.
I'm gonna need um you know, a bit of food lined up as well.
Food.
You know, pizzas, burgers, um.
Oh, maybe I could get a free pizza on my, in my counter seat. Let me look into that, right? But I mean, uh I I'm thinking uh, I would, I mean, I ain't gonna be a hundred grand, let me tell you that, right? Let's say uh twenty five grand. Camera hire.
Sounds good, hold on.
Venue hire.
Higher.
Venue hire, cause I'm a, I'm a major whole thing, right?
The the building's government owned. What are you on about?
But I mean, anybody else would be expected by venue hire. See what I mean?
But we're holding this in a place that we own, so we don't have to pay that.
Well.
Yes, the venue's too much of an issue. We can have it in the courthouse.
All right, we'll forget the venue hire, right? What about twenty grand?
Very sexy. I mean, the church isn't very sexy. Is there any businesses?
Church is, no, no, church is sexy. It is, right? It's like, oh.
Of course, of course.
Well, no, no, hear me out, right? It's like uh you know, imagine uh, okay, imagine you're sitting there, right? It's you alone in the church and in comes a nun. Right? And you think, oh, hi, hello, sister. But then uh all right, hang on. Now scrap that. It says, listen, just try, there's a, it's a psychological thing, right? There's a, there's a sexiness, the church, there is. Right? There's a, there's an allure and especially because it's unexpected, right? See what I mean?
Right, well, we'll do a bit of research. We'll do a bit of research because, you know.
People have had sex in the church.
Right, okay, well, I don't know how that's relevant to what we're discussing.
Well, you, I'm trying to show you it's sexy, right? It's something about it.
In that church, Daniel?
No, I've not had, I would never. I would not.
Yes, you're quite right.
Sorry?
So you you said uh twenty five K is what you're requesting. What do you say to that, Mayor?
I will need to do my calculations, but you know, just be prepared to not get twenty five K and then you look disappointed. All right.
Well, I need a answer today so I can get, make preparations, right? I'm gonna have to solve the camera hire.
Why do you need a camera?
I'm gonna make a whole thingy thing, right? My whole job is engagement. My whole engagement, my whole job is engagement, right? I ain't gonna make a home video. I'm gonna make a very tasteful, very professional my uh video, right?
The media there as well, actually. We do need to get the media there. We know any news reporters.
Dog is my guide.
I do, do agree with it, Daniel. If you're gonna do it, you may as well do it, right?
Okay, okay.
I need a green screen, right?
You don't need a green screen. You do not need a green screen, Daniel.
I need a green screen so I can film myself and pu- I could put myself in any scenario.
Go to the film studios. They've got a green screen there. You can use it.
No, they don't. I've checked.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
When?
I'll go and show it to you myself if I have to.
Hang on, hang on. Are you talking about that gigantic rusted up fucking wall outside that's painted green? The thing you need to realise about green screen, right? The light cannot be changing constantly. It needs to be the same colour. Same brightness, needs to be in a controlled environment indoors, no sunlight coming in. I need lighting. I need a sound man. I need a video editor. I need a a special effects producer. I need actors, right? Models. I need food to feed people. I need uh a grip, a gaffer.
We don't need models. We don't need models. This isn't some sort of TV show that we're putting on.
All right, well, I'll just shoot it on my phone and uh uh won't edit it and don't worry about green screen effects and nothing like that. Special effects.
Right, I I'm conscious we need to wrap this meeting, so just very quickly going through my actions.
All right.
So I've basically done everything other than reach out to neighbourhood watch. Do they still want to come to this meeting, Daniel?
Oh, shoot, uh. Yeah, shoot, I think, I think they might have wanted to come, shoot.
Okay, well, we just pick up with them at some point and see if that's the case, they can come to the next one, okay?
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay, um, did they reward money tweet?
Sorry, that is okay for people to come along and pitch their ideas and give them the presentations.
We need to, we need to vet them. We need to know it's not gonna be a waste of our time, you know? What, we need to understand the purpose of them coming to the meeting.
Yeah, yes.
Asking to join the city council, it's, this is an open invitation for people to to get involved, okay?
Yeah, yes.
To come and do a presentation on something they might want support from the city council with or some, a new initiative they wanna propose, a new business they wanna propose, that sort of thing.
Of course.
Now, I had one last thing I wanted to put out there.
All right.
Just talking about TV and things like that. I was wondering if maybe we set up our own little reality TV show here in Los Santos. You know, get people, get people's attention drawn to our city.
Oh, yeah, it's right.
That's as far as the thoughts got, really.
Oh, shoot, well, I don't know if you met this light of verity, right?
Brother. Yeah, yeah.
She's.
Not matter, but I've heard of it, yeah.
Oh, yes, right. She was saying something about starting up a uh what was it? Like a theatre crew or something like that? So we could uh use those, use the actors from that to make this reality, well, you know, to make this, make it seem like a reality show. You know, none of these reality shows are actually organic, right?
Oh, yeah, of course. Um, but if she, if she wants to run the drama club, then tell her that there's a firewood bowl that she can use free of charge. Um.
Oh, yes.
Um, and yeah, if she wants to come to the city council meeting and discuss it more, she's more than welcome, but otherwise have at it. It's an open space there that doesn't get used or utilized, so.
Yes. Oh, shoot, I should put a service on there.
Okay, Henry?
That's just, no, this is one of the best things about the cities, the theatres, but it's very well.
Sorry?
Just one of the reasons I I li- I like this city so much is because.
Fuckers going off my mouse.
Name didn't need to follow me.
Mouse is fucked.
Have you got some theatre, you've got some actors in your family?
Uh, yes, uh, from a long line of theatre owners.
There we go.
Quite a lot, no.
Oh, maybe you could purchase a theatre for them to.
Oh, shoot.
No, no, I I I, there's a reason, you know, I went down the the law field, you know, I wanted to make my own name.
Okay.
Well, put it on a theatre, right? Put your name on a theatre. Henry Van Winkle Theatre for the.
Von Humphreys Theatre.
Von Humphreys. Oh, yes, yes, right.
Right, well.
Well, I could, I I mean, oh, all right, yes.
Okay, so reality TV show can be part for now whilst we're trying to establish the drama club. Um, but other than that.
Well, hang on, hang on. I I mean, if I'm going to the trouble of hiring cameras and, you know, film crew and everything, maybe, you know, we get two birds with one stone, you could. Well, no, I, no, yeah, that's why I need the budget, twenty five grand, but okay.
You could do it on your phone.
Oh, no, I was.
Without a green screen.
Being sarcastic. Of course, son, I ain't gonna do it on my phone, talking about real production here. And then we could, I I mean, we could uh, for a little bit extra, I could then hire that out to y'all, right? Y- y'all could pay me to do the uh reality TV show, since I already got all the uh the the stuff you need for it, right?
I mean, for that, we will probably hire a professional TV production crew.
That's what I'm talking about, hiring professionals, right? I would be producer, director, writer.
Okay, uh, anybody got anything else they wanna discuss? Are we done here?
Um, no, nothing I can think of.
Nothing I can think of, right? Uh, one thing, maybe I could talk to you afterwards about about uh Mrs Suzie.
Okey dokey, yeah, no problem. Do you want Henry there as well?
I mean, it ain't a big secret, nothing I'm happy to say right now.
Oh, go on.
All right, well. This plumber man from from yesterday, from yesterday's maiden, right? Was was had grave concern for your safety. And uh heard heard, don't know how, that uh mayor had been kidnapped and all of this. And so the question was asked of the people in the gallery. Uh, to say, wh- wh- the audience, right? You know, what do y'all think of the mayor? And uh, do you wanna know the answer? Most people gave?
Oh, come on, then.
He was basically like, I don't know. Right? So uh, my my suggestion is you and me. I've said this before, I've said it before, man, you and me need to be out there being seen together.
Right, okay, well.
People don't know you. They don't, they wanna get to know you, right?
But Daniel, I don't particularly like people that much, okay?
I understand.
Part of the job. I know it's part of the job. It's part of the job I I least like. It's very hard to pretend to like people. But I suppose let's just see how I am after this glow up. It might change our perspective.
You get used to it. In no time, people be like, oh, she actually likes me. If you just give it a little bit of practice, take my lead and be seen with me, cause you know, we slip people. You be seen with me, people be like, oh, that mayor, she's cool. Right? And and you take my lead, you watch me how I do it, right? It's easy.
Okay, yes. Right, uh.
We need to be seen together.
Reginald, do you wanna get your jacket back?
Um. Oh, is that why it's so hot? Shoot, I've been.
Tell you what, you can um, you can keep a whole little one of good hair, another ten like that in my closet.
I'll get it back to you, right? I'll give it a good wash. I do realise I'm sweating a little bit.
Oh, God, meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned.
Okay, very well.
Oh, I do apologise, right?
I'll get the news.
Oh, shoot, I've.
Thanks, thanks very much, Henry.
I'm just feeling a little, I'm just feeling a little lightheaded, I just.
It's up, Daniel, sit down a second if you need to.
No, I'm okay.
Oh, Luchok, have you got any of the water to to give them?
Oh, I just feel like I've been hit with a ton of bricks, right? Oh, thank you, so.
Daniel, why don't you get yourself back to the hospital, get checked out?
Yeah, I'm fine.
You don't look fine, you look awful.
I said I'm fine. Oh, shoot.
Give me the bloody bottle, geez.
Could you open that for me, please?
Hey, take it back.
Thank you, thank you. Oh. Oh, shoot, I think I'm gonna throw up. Okay, could.
Yeah, out, 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 out into the lobby. Where are the toilets in here? Do we have toilets in here?
No, I'm okay. I'm okay. I just feel a little clammy, right?
Right, okay, well, go outside, get some fresh air, yeah, yeah.
I'll head up to the hospital, okay? Just to make, make you all happy.
Okay, right.
Oh, I guess. Oh, oh, thank you. Oh, shoot. Oh, shoot. Oh, shoot, Luchok, do you think I might be able to get a lift up to hospital?
Yeah, of course.
All right, thank you, so. I mean, I'd. Can you recall any other issues I forgot to bring up? I mean, there was a lot of issues brought up. I can't fucking remember any, right? I should have brought a no pad.
I only remember the last meeting. I don't remember those before.
Yes, yes, right. No, I've.
You mentioned many things.
Oh, I feel like I've forgotten a lot of things, let a lot of people down. I'll have to uh.
You prop the taxes, right?
Yeah, yes.
Well, it's.
The Aragama bullshit, yes. One issue, yeah, well. I mean, there were some uh issues I wa- you know, I'd never bring up, obviously, cause they were, ain't real issues, right? People just wanna have their jokes.
There was a lot of Spider-Man a lot.
Sorry, what was that?
There was a lot of talk about Spider-Man.
Oh, yeah, people playing around. Being assholes, not taking it seriously.
What's, what's your opinion on Spider-Man?
My opinion on, well, you know my stance. I think Batman is a lot more believable, right? A lot more likeable.
Yeah, Batman is the best superhero.
Yes, exactly, right? Spider-Man's a bunch of mumbo jo- oh, bitten by radioactive Sparta. Get the fuck out of here, right?
Really, I I like Spider-Man, right? But Batman is just nasty.
Yes, I don't hate Spider-Man, don't get me wrong, but I mean, and I don't love Batman neither, it's just, I mean, Batman's way better. All right, thank you very much for the lift, so.
No problem.
All right, take care.
Right, see you later.
Thank you.
Alar, horje, mantana, here, hello.
Yes, uh, hello, hello. It's uh me, Daniel Woodcock. Sorry, so I was in a, in a uh city council maiden.
Is she the coun- council meeting? Okay.
Yeah, yes.
How are you, Mr. Woodcock? How are you?
Well, not good.
I would not speak about it?
Well, yes, you'd have to go into the hospital, right? I'm I'm terribly ill. I've had a heart attack.
Oh, no, don't be to come, come over.
Is that all right? I mean, you know, just make sure nobody sees you come in.
Oh, o- okay, I, right, I, I, I'm, I go to you. I try not to be seen.
Yeah, yes, I'm in the foyer. You'll see me when you walk in and then I'll take you to my room, all right?
Okey dokey, I see you soon.
All right, bye bye.
Bye bye.
Did I answer that? Why is Reginald naked? Um, if you're still there, Grundy. I um Woodcock had the cold sweats, basically. And um, Reginald offered.
Are you all right?
And listen, I, yes, hello, uh, my name's Daniel and I've I've recently supposedly had a, had a little heart attack. And uh.
Right.
Uh, you know, I've just had very important uh city council maiden and.
Do you wanna, do you wanna come through to my office?
Oh, yes, please. I got. Oh yes, please. I got a friend coming up to meet me as well.
Alright, okay, is it a friend, yeah, not a relative or not?
Friend. I would consider it. What's her name?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh, Ho- Jorge, Spanish man.
Right, so okay, but, you know, in the, in these appointments, you know, you can't have someone with you, now you gotta do it, you just gotta do it on your own, right?
Do you want?
The assessments and that?
Assessments? No, I'm fine, I just need a little bit of, uh, I don't know, paracetamol or something.
I come in here, take a seat.
Oh yes, look at the old, look at these computers here, sit where? Over here?
That's right, yeah.
All right, so what was your name again?
I'm Doctor Malone, Doctor Malone.
Oh yes, hello, hello, I'm Father Daniel Woodcock, we ain't met yet, have we?
I don't believe so, I'm pretty new to this, uh, hospital, I've transferred over.
Oh yes, right.
So, um, yeah, nice to meet you, what did you say your name was again, sorry?
Daniel Woodcock, I'm a, I'm a preacher and I'm, and I'm a councilman, so, yes, I had a heart attack.
Right, sounds like you're a bit, you know, sounds like a stressful job, that.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Councilman.
Yes, among other things, of course.
About that then, what's that like?
Oh shit, well, it's very rewarding, right? Puts me in contact with people I ordinarily would never even, you know, wanna be around. Or, you know, people I would never even, you know, dream of being around. And, uh, you know, people are very kind to me. Cause I'm kind to people, they're kind to me. So I get to kinda see the best of people, I also get to see the worst of people, show. But that's, uh, you know, it's, uh. Just a wonderful thing. To be able to see the best and worst of people all at once.
Yeah, no, that sounds fucking really interesting, isn't it?
Yeah, it's right, and, um.
Would you say it's like a har- A bit of a cloud, like high pressure?
A very high pressure, do excuse me, please, yes, hello.
Uh, all are.
Oh, Jorge, yes. All right, what room is this, man?
Rice, can I just ask why you're having someone with you in this same appointment and that?
Well, I, I didn't even, like, I just thought, you know, I was gonna lie in bed and, uh, he could, he could like pat my head with a. With a wet towel or something, right, make me, nurse me back. You know what, it, it, should he wait a little while?
Well, it can come in if he wants, but like, you know, I'm gonna be doing a lot of health assessments and stuff with you, and I don't know if you're gonna want someone else there while you're here.
All right, well, I, it, it, here. The jo- uh, Jorge, just, uh, gi- give me a moment, right? Just, just, uh, come into the walls, so nobody, you know, so you ain't out there at the front, right? Come into the walls.
You can just sit in the lobby, there's plenty of seats in there.
Next door, uh, ward eight, okay?
All right, okay, all right. All right, I'll speak to you soon.
Okay, I.
All right, I do apologise.
To do this, if you need to see your mate.
No, no, this is, I mean, my health is priority, obviously, right?
Right.
I shouldn't have even gone to that golf psych in, uh, council meeting.
Okay, so would you say you've been feeling stressed then for like the last few weeks?
Yes, we go with that doctor-patient confidentiality, right?
Of course, yeah.
And I mean, what is the extent of that? Like, what's the upper limit of that?
Can you give me like a, uh, rhetorical?
Like a, oh, right, oh, I hate rhetoricals, right, okay.
Is it rhetorical, my, is that what I?
Hypothetical?
Hypothetical, that's it, yeah.
I hate hypotheticals, right, but I'll do my best. Let's say a preacher man, let's say a friend of mine, right?
Right.
Uh, let's say he was tricked into. Doing something he ordinarily would never do. And that has triggered a heart incident. Such as a heart attack and, uh, you know, maybe it was, uh, let's say, shoot, I don't know. Just stabbing, let's say, I don't know, he was falsely, he tricked into snorting cocaine or something like that.
Right, so, okay, we realise cocaine's a stimulant and that.
Yeah, but you know, I don't know, he's, you wouldn't be obliged to tell the authorities or anybody, right?
No, not at all, no, um, obviously, I'll, I'll make a note of it on your medical record, but no one else will see that.
It would be, there would be a record of it, but I mean, let's say hypothetically. The record was never might, it was just so you had the additional context of knowing what happened to me hypothetically.
I don't know if I'm allowed to do that against my medical licence, like, I do have to tell the truth and that.
But who would ever know?
Access that, no one can access that unless, you know, a court injunction was in place or something, and they needed to access it that way, but that's. Highly unlikely. Do you not want your medical records to reflect what's actually happened? Because whatever happens again.
Well. I don't know. I don't want, I wouldn't want to say if that's what happened, I wouldn't want that on any record, right? I'm a councilman for goodness sake. You know, these pesky rapporters and, and private detectives, right? They'll be able to dig all that up.
Okay, well, your health is my priority, all right? So, if you're not gonna tell me that that happened, then I'll look and focus on it and notice about you.
What if you just treat it as though that's what happened without, you know, believing that that's the official cause?
Right, as I was just saying, if you don't tell me that's what happened, and I just do the assessments now, then I don't have to include it, all right?
Oh, right.
Okay.
Well, I don't wanna say that's what happened either. It's what happened, it's what happened, right? But I mean, I was tricked into it. They told me it was sugar, to sni- to have a sniff of sugar. I thought, oh shit, this, you know.
I just need to tell you before you give me any more information that I'm gonna have to disclose this in your medical record now, you, you've said that.
You just said, no, you just, hang on, didn't you just say? No, I'm talking hypothetically here, right?
No, no, you just said that that happens. Listen, if you want me to give you the proper treatment, you're gonna have to be honest with me, all right? My, um, I'm not bothered, I'm not interested in what you get up to in your spare time and that.
Uh, unknowingly, unknowingly, and, uh. Ac- kinda accidentally, snorted, uh, a, a big line of cocaine.
Right, so is that the first time you've ever done cocaine? Would you say your cocaine use is regular?
No, no, I ain't regular, right? I've, I mean, I had it in my youth. Back when I was in LA, I was in LA for a brief period and it was such, it's everywhere there, I don't know if you ever buy it, it is everywhere.
All right, so would you say like once a month then, or even less than that?
No, no, I'm talking once, once a decade, right?
All right, okay, okay.
Yeah, yes.
You're not, as long as you used to be, Daniel.
Yo, I know, right?
Can it clearly?
Yes, I know, I mean, one more, one more line and I'm up a diet. It might, you know, what I'll do in the future, just have a little, you know, I mean, if I was forced to do it or anything, I would just say. Oh, oh, I just have a little bit, right?
Yeah, I mean, as your doctor, I would not recommend you do it again, given the reaction you've had.
Yes, right, well, it ain't worth it, is it?
No, no, so just tell me then what happened after you did it, what, what symptoms were you experiencing?
Okay, I was, uh, well, uh, very hard you follow you. Feeling like I could take on anybody.
Okay, yes, very common symptoms.
Yes, uh, confidence like you wouldn't believe. And, uh. I, I, uh, what's the word, satiated, is that the words? It's, uh.
It's like, satiated?
Yes, that mean I didn't wanna eat?
I think so, yeah.
Had no desire to eat.
So no appetite, all right, yeah?
Yes.
And then in terms of when you started to feel unwell, what happened then?
I was promptly. Forced to take five tequila shots in a row, one after the other.
Just as a bit of education, like.
Yes.
Alcohol's a stimulant, I'm sorry, cocaine's a stimulant, but alcohol has the opposite effect, it's more of a sedative.
Depressing, right?
Yeah, that's right, so, um, I wouldn't, I, obviously, I would not recommend you take cocaine at the best of times, but. Um, doing alcohol and cocaine is very dangerous, cause your body does not know what to do, like, it, it puts a lot of strain on your heart.
Of course. Well, you telling me, right? She did. Well, there was all kind of, uh, I was, you know, I was tricked into the cocaine and then at that point, I can't be. You know, uh, they could have put a heroin needle into my arm. And I would have been like, yeah, let's do it, right? You see what I mean?
Right, yeah, I mean, I really would recommend doing that either.
On cocaine?
For a woodcock, what I would suggest you do is maybe just, whilst you're feeling quite stressed, just lay off all sorts of substances. You know, find some more healthy coping mechanisms and that.
No, I understand, right, but I mean, LSD, for example, ain't never killed nobody, right?
It has a no, but it, it does affect your brain and that.
Okay, it's right.
Right, shall we, um, shall we do so- some physical tests then? I mean, sorry, you said you'd had five tequila shots. And then I'm assuming something bad happened after that?
I basically collapsed right then and there, and that's all I remember, and then I woke up in the hospital, right?
Right, you'd had chest pains and that?
Oh, I just felt like the whole world was coming down on me, like, uh, like somebody was kneeling on my chest. Like, like, had an elbow really, you know, digging in there, yeah, yes.
Right, and how you been feeling today?
Oh, not great, right? I'm trying to stay stress-free and, uh, I mean, I just had to deal with. Room full of people who, who. Didn't really appreciate that.
It's all right, Daniel, just take your time.
Yeah, yes.
Sounds like you've, you've let this build up for a little while, I can see you getting a bit upset.
Well. A man in my position, you. It's, I gotta, I gotta watch what I say every second of the day. I gotta make sure, oh. Nobody can know this, nobody can know that. Oh, I gotta be on my best behaviour. It's a lot.
Don't really get time to be you, eh? The real you, the authentic you and that?
Yeah, it is.
No, I hear you, Daniel, that sounds really rough, that.
It is.
Right, well, let's do some physical tests first, all right? Just to gauge how your body's coping now, if it's recovering okay.
All right, can I quickly go grab my friend?
Of course, yeah, that's fine. Can I just check before you bring him in?
Yeah, yes.
Consent to him hearing anything I've got to advise in terms of your medical condition, or do you want me to check him before I do anything like that?
No, it's, uh, duh, uh, as if he wasn't here, right?
Right, okay, okay, you can't be disruptive though, all right? I've got a job to do.
I'll, I'll personally kick his ass if he disrupts, all right?
Right, okay.
I'll for, uh, uh, yeah, all right. Jorge, come on in, right? You're gonna watch me get tested or whatever, okay? I didn't wanna leave you waiting out here.
All okay, okay.
Jorge, I've had a heart attack, right?
Right, well, we're not, it's not been diagnosed, yes, like, but it sounds like.
Preliminary, that's what the uncle doctor wanted to say. I'm thinking it was just a, uh, I don't know, gas.
Right, uh, sorry, what was your name?
Uh, me, Jorge Montana.
Jorge, all right, um, I'm Doctor Malone, I'm here to treat your friend here. Um, do you wanna take a seat there, Jorge, around the, uh, chair next to the desk?
There ain't gonna be any record of this man being here, or?
Um, no, this is all, I'm not gonna put anything on the records.
Yeah, it's right. Oh, yes.
Right, so first of all, Daniel, I'm gonna ask you to take your, um, your top and your trousers off, please, and your shoes, if that's okay?
Of course, yeah, yes. My underwear?
No, you can, you can keep your underwear on, all right? I'll just turn around whilst you get sources.
What about my socks?
You can keep your socks on, that's fine. How do you two know each other then? What's going on?
Oh, this man, uh.
Uh, I, I, I moved to, sorry, I, I.
He moved.
I'm so sorry. Uh, sorry, let me just sit down properly.
You, right, he, he, uh, he's a, oh, he's just a bartender, right? I know the man, he's, cause he's a bartender.
And you wanted him in, and you wanted him in your medical assessments?
Well, well, no, I didn't want him in my medical assessment, right, but here we are.
Right, so you consent to him being here, I just need to be really clear on that.
I can say it, the, Jorge, you, you say anything, I'ma sue your ass, all right? Understood?
Uh, no, 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 I, me, me, me's, me what you say, I see.
Jorge, I will kill you if you say anything, all right?
Uh, 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 okay, I, 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 I say nothing, I say nothing.
I'm not, I, I, Jorge, don't take things so serious, I ain't gonna kill him, obviously.
Right, can I just ask you to step on the scales here?
Of course, yeah, yes.
Oh, the. Right, this is just gonna check all your vitals and that, and the.
Yeah, yes.
Your body fat percentage, all that stuff, just to gauge how likely you are to have a heart attack.
Oh, right.
Look at this here, let's see what it.
These, the scales, do they?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the, those like metal ones where it does the like electric, uh, current up your body. And it can gauge all that shit.
Shoot, that ain't gonna mess with my mind chemistry, nothing like that, is it?
No, no, not at all, it's perfectly safe. If you just have a look at the screen and tell me like how, how likely it is you're gonna have a heart attack. Can you just say, it should be red, amber or green?
Oh, look at that.
What's that then?
How likely I'm gonna have a heart attack? Has it, okay. It's coming through now.
Right.
It's green.
Right, so you're not gonna, so naturally, you're not, your body is likely to. Have a heart, heart attack. I can see on there it's saying about.
Oh shit, really? Sorry.
What?
I mean.
Go on, I'm the doctor, but don't worry about it, go on, what you saying?
Yes, so you saying it was, uh, the, the, uh, cocaine that gave me the, well. There's the, the sugar, I've had too much sugar, that's okay.
Right, Daniel, this isn't gonna work if we have to talk in riddles, all right? Now, we have a talk frankly with your friend here, or your friend needs to leave?
All right, I, I overdosed on cocaine and tequila, Jorge. And it sounds, and. And it sounds like that's, uh, what the doctor's saying, that, uh, that it was the cocaine and the tequila.
Well, they haven't actually said what it is yet, cause you keep fucking interrupting me.
Oh, I don't need this kind of stress, please, don't.
Sorry, 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 right, I'm just a bit.
You gotta understa- eh, no, you gotta understand, I'm, I'm skilled.
I understand this advice, so, it's green, that's a good thing, right? It just means that you're not gonna be naturally, uh, predisposed to heart attacks.
Oh shit.
It means you do need to avoid cocaine, and I would recommend avoiding or limiting your alcohol use, okay? Now, we just say there that you, your, your blood pressure is slightly elevated. Now, I imagine that's due to the stress under that you mentioned, all right?
By the stress, right? This constant, this stress, just eating and weighing at me and eating at me, and eating at me.
So I'm gonna do one more test with you, all right?
All right. With my eyes.
Well, we can do that as well, we can do that as well if you want. Do you wanna do that now?
No, I thought you said you were, oh, yes, go on, okay, where do I stand?
Close my eyes for a moment, I, I, I just, I.
All right.
So, what do you say, Jorge? Right, so.
All right.
Yeah, take your glasses off, we might as well just check your prescription whilst you're here. Can you read that top line for me?
Yes.
Okay, say it.
Y- yes, I can read that top line for you.
Yeah, can you read the letter for me, please?
A.
And the second line?
A.
The second line?
Yes, A, uh, double E.
The, no, no, the second line below E.
Oh. A B?
I think your, um, your eyesight might have deteriorated a bit, so, um, you might wanna go back to the opticians at some point, get a stronger prescription, alright?
Oh, shit. Well, I ain't, well, with my gla, okay, can I try with my glasses?
Yeah, go for it.
It's A B?
No, that says F P.
Oh, fuck, oh, that line, yes, no, I got it.
Right, well, there's no other line that says E B, so.
I was looking vertically, right? Oh. Okay, I'll, I'll go see opti- opto- optomission, optometrist, right?
Yeah, that'll probably be a good shot.
Alright.
Right. Uh, come here, right, just stand over there again and face me, please, if you just step back a bit. Right, I want you to do ten star jumps.
Oh, shit, okay.
So if you think about doing jumping jacks.
I know how to do a star jump, right?
Alright, but if you feel dizzy at all at any point, just stop, alright? One.
T.
Two.
Three.
Three. It's alright, just take a minute, just take a minute.
I can do it, right?
You got this, come on.
Four, five.
Five.
Six.
I see, just take your time.
Okay, so three left.
Yeah, yeah. Four left, seven, eight.
Ten, oh, nine, yes. Oh, shoot, one more.
Are you a bit out of breath there?
I can do it, right?
I said ten, there you go.
Two more, come on, I can do it.
Right, don't ever push yourself, alright?
I'm just a bit, uh, I should have done my, you know, limbed up a little bit, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, sorry, I did put you on the spot a bit there.
Yes, I've been laying in a bed for last, you know, while, twenty-four hours.
Right, can you try doing some pushups for me?
Yes, of course.
If you just think about doing pushup.
I know how to do a pushup now.
Alright, fucking hell, you're smashing my
I can do it or die. Well, hang on, okay.
Right, it's okay, yeah, alright. Go over it, stop, 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 stop. Right, yeah, I'll take a seat on the bed, come here. Right, so how you feeling right now?
Tip top.
You look a bit out of breath there, you know, I don't think your stamina's that great. You're probably a bit unfit, so I would recommend, you know, try and get in some more exercise, some walks and that. Try and walk places more, alright?
Yes. What about diet, right? Because, uh, I mean, I, I've been eating a lot of shit. I, I eat like a, just a, I don't eat right, right? Eat a load of fried food, chocolate.
You answered your own question there, haven't you? I know there's that truth organic store, start eating stuff from there, organic whole foods.
Yeah, yes.
Right?
No.
Never treats.
Very healthy for your father, you know?
Yeah, yes, I know.
Exactly.
I know. I don't mind the satan wraps in the, uh, the fruit juices, right?
Jorge, you're gonna be his accountability, busy, alright? So, so far, we've recommended, make, make a note of this. He's gotta go on more walks, at least one walk a day, try and walk places more. He's gonna try more healthy foods, like the whole foods, satan wraps, all that shit. And then, um, you're gonna try and limit your alcohol use, ideally, you're not gonna drink at all, but I will allow like a couple.
Yeah, no, I got, yeah, yes.
No binge drinking, alright?
Oh.
You said Mister Whatca, you, you, you look like this when you, you, you take a walk, you know? You, you look like this.
I see, perfect, that's what we want.
No, boat? What the hell is it? Is it a bear? The fucking, what are you, is that supposed to be my?
Uh, see.
I don't, I, no, no, I'm taller than that, first of all. Oh, oh, no, I know what going for walk looks like, Jorge.
No, li- listen, have you taken any of the other ones as well, Jorge?
Did you draw me, did you draw me doing the jumping jacks?
Uh, uh, no, I just
Could you?
No, I just tell you to, to walk in the forest, you know?
Right, I ain't walking no forest, right? No, no.
Right, okay, so, you need to write down about the walks, you need to write down about the healthy diet, you need to write down about limiting this alcohol use.
Limited drinking.
Two drinks.
In, in how long? At once?
Two drinks a week. You could have them both at the same time.
No, no, see, no, 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 no. I'd, listen, I could, I ain't addicted to alcohol, nothing like that.
Mate, I cannot force you to do this, this is just my medical advice. Do you wanna take it, the short operative, but I'll expect to see you back here in a few weeks' time with the same issues, alright?
Well, hang on, wh- what if you just advised that, uh, drink a regular amount, but be careful?
No, me, me advice stays the same, limited use of alcohol, find other things to do to de-stress.
Yes.
Absolutely no, and I repeat, no cocaine whatsoever.
What about marijuana?
No illicit drugs, no illicit drugs.
Marijuana is medication.
Mechanisms.
Could you prescribe me?
Very bad, Mister Father.
Marijuana, marijuana ain't legal? Medical marijuana? I wish he told me before the, oh shit, I could have, that could have been issue I brought up. Don't, okay, I'mma get that changed, alright?
I know there's a, we don't do it here, but, um, I know there's a cafe that sells it.
Yeah, yes, but you go to consume it on the premises, right? And I don't like, uh, getting high there, bad vibes. I don't, I, I ain't even, you know, so like, shit, li- listen, what about if medical marijuana was legal? Would you be able to prescribe me medical marijuana to, uh,
If it was, if it was made legal?
Recreation. If it was made legal, yes. Or would you say, no, your heart can't take it?
I would just, you do, you do not need it, you just need to make, find more healthy coping mechanisms, like going for walks and stuff. Like, is there anything else that's going on in your life that's causing you stress at the moment?
Yeah, yes.
Other than work, I mean, what are you doing in your downtime?
Deal with the stri, well, um,
He, he go for walks now in his downtime, you know?
Excuse me?
Now he, now in his downtime, he go for walks, I make him go for walks.
Good, yeah, thanks. There's a lovely park, I've heard, in the centre of the city, Leeson Park.
No, I, no, it ain't lovely.
Or the beach?
Beach is lovely, right? Beach, I mean, me and the beach haven't had our differences, but don't worry, that, I've been taken care of, don't you worry about that.
Right, so I'm prescribing you a beach day, alright? Go get your bucket and spade.
I love diet.
Yeah, right, go get your bucket and spade from that Sally's Beach shop, get yourself sources.
Oh, hopefully the ice cream man be down there. Can I have ice cream?
Yeah, yeah, of course, in moderation, that's fine.
Of course, yes. I mean, look at this physique, right? I, I mean, I don't get this eating nothing but ice cream, right?
Well, you are looking a bit scrawny, might say, I, I think you need to start looking after yourself properly, alright? And you'll be doing that by taking all my advice.
Of course, right? Next time you see me, you'll be like, oh, who's this beefcake, right? All tan and, and swole.
Oh, right, sure. Get this all the time.
Oh, right.
Last thing I wanted to say, are you a smoker?
Cigarettes?
That's the one?
No, no, I mean, I, I, I would say in the past six months, I've had maybe three puffs of cigarette.
That's fine then.
Yeah, yes.
Right, and then just in terms of how you're doing mentally and that, with your stress?
Yeah, yes.
What are your, what are your current coping mechanisms other than the stuff you've already mentioned? Like, do you do any hobbies? Go fishing, that sort of stuff?
Well, I enjoy, uh, I like fishing, I don't get out that much. I like golf, I don't get out that much. I like bowling, I don't get out that much. I like to be work focused, right? I got a big
Why don't you and Jorge, right?
Yes.
Plan a little fishing trip or a bowling trip, whatever it is you wanna do, and go have a bit of fun, let you hair down a little bit.
Oh, yeah, yes, right. Oh, I'd love that, because I, I got a big, big project coming up with work. And, uh, oh, shoot, if I need a medical expert, perhaps, uh, I could, I could call upon your staff. Mrs Monroe, right? What was it, Monroe?
Uh, Malone.
Malone. What was your first name if you don't X?
Doctor Malone, it's Doctor Malone, yeah.
Doctor, Doctor Malone. So did your parents, uh, is your name, your name ain't actually Doctor?
We, we don't need to know my first name because my name is Doctor Malone.
Well, there it is right there, on your name tag.
Yeah, Doctor Malone.
Oh, does say Doctor Malone. What's the big secret? You know my first name?
Why do you wanna know my first name?
Why don't you want me to know your first name?
Because I'm a professional. I don't need you to know my first name.
Do you even work here, man?
I do work here, yeah, I've got a badge on that says I work here. I've got keys to the office.
Oh, you got a, you got a badge. Oh, you got the keys.
Right, do you want me to write you any, any prescriptions or anything, or are you just gonna question me?
No, no, do your job, no, do your
Do you know what, Daniel, actually, this feels like a massive deflection, because you're clearly struggling at the moment. Before Jorge came in, you were fucking basically crying in that chair there.
Oh, shit, my chest, my chest is hurting. Oh, my chest, oh, please, don't talk to me like that. More you talk to me like that, more my chest hurts, please.
Right, do you know what that is?
Oh, it's strays.
That's you hearing a truth you don't wanna hear, right?
Truth I don't wanna hear. Well, that, that, uh, you refused to give me your first name, alright. Alright, it's just rude, man. I didn't, I don't wanna be on your bad side, I'm here trying to get help. What about that hypocritical oath, huh? You're giving me another heart attack. I think I'm having another heart attack.
All Mister Whatca, come on, let's, let's go, let's go for a
Jose, I'm having another, uh, Jorge, I'm having another hard, I'm trying to have another heart attack. I can't even have another heart attack without people being up my ass. I ain't done fine, right?
Right, wait, I'm just, let me just listen, right?
Alright. What, do you think I can't handle a second heart attack? Please. Alright. Yes, the hair is real.
Okay. Right, so your heart rate's slightly elevated or I bruise appears to be irregular or not, and you ju- you just need to kinda chill out, so I guess.
Well, I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to be.
Just lower your tone.
I'm sorry, could you just?
Calm down.
Alright, you did, little in my spice, please. Thank you.
Right, do you want me to write you a fit note for work at all? I can sign you off work, I can tell them that you're currently stressed, so you need to do this work load.
No, 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 I have duties and I must attend to them. I'm not looking for a free ride.
It's alright to ask for support, you know, Daniel, when you're struggling and that.
No, it ain't, not when you're a man like me, see the councilman preacher.
Right, Daniel, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you my name because you're clearly struggling right now and I want you to feel like you've got someone to talk to if you need any more medical assistance.
I don't wanna know, no, no, too, I don't wanna know, no.
It's E V.
Stevie, like Stevie Neeks?
E V.
E V. E dot V dot? Or is it like a E V Y or E V R E or E V E E? I mean, you know, give, no, you know what? I appreciate you telling me.
I'm sorry, I did just make that name up. That's not really my first name, I was just trying to see if it made you feel any better.
It did, right? Thank you. I do feel better.
Do you want any prescription or anything, like medication wise, or you're just gonna try and go this alone?
Where would you go?
Well, like
Nah, he got alone, he got me.
Have you got any pain still?
I got my bartender, right? My bartender's gonna sell me.
Do not give him any alcohol.
I can have tea. She, oh, Jorge, the doctor said I could have tea, you heard that?
Listen, Daniel, all I cared about is your health, alright?
Right, I wish that, I wish that was the least, I wish that's all I could care about, but I got a lot of fun, yes.
Daniel, Daniel, look at me.
Oh, shit, yes.
All I care about is your, um, your, your health and wellbeing, alright? And you do not need to struggle through this alone. I know you said you've got a lot of stress in your place, but you don't wanna burn yourself out, okay?
I'm fine.
Right, get your clothes back on, I'll write up a report. Did you, sorry, did you say you wanted me to write anything up for you, for you to take to work or not? No.
Uh.
You can always change your mind later.
Alright, I'll change my mind if I'm a, no, I don't need it. Like I said, like, I mean, if anything, they'll just use it against me, right? Oh, you can't work, you, you, you know, you see it, you ain't, you know, as strong as we once thought.
Ah, no, don't, don't think, don't think like that. They won't think of you like that, you know?
Take him fish and will you?
Of course, I will.
Get him some fresh air, he's gonna need it. Had a tough time.
Come, come on.
Oh, thank you.
Massage his shoulders and that, you know, get him chilled out.
Oh, could you, could you give me massage, man?
Oh, I've got my latex gloves on, you see, it will be very comfortable and that.
I'll be pulling my shoulder hair out. No, 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 I'll be fine, thank you, Jorge.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
Alright, now you take care now, right, Samir?
Thank you, man.
Let's book in a follow-up appointment maybe, if you're not feeling great.
I'm sorry, I cut you off there.
It's alright, I'm used to it. Um, we can arrange a follow-up appointment if you want, um, just so we can make sure that things are going in the right direction with your mental health and, you know, your, your physical health and all that.
I'd like that. So you're telling me I'm going to pool three?
I think so, yeah, right. If you wanna just wait outside the lobby, um, what date would be good for you?
Okay, okay, I, I wait.
Next week or maybe same time?
Today, around, shall we say half nine?
Half nine, that sounds fine.
Right, go wait out in the lobby, I'll just quickly write you up a appointment notes and then, um, you can be on your way, okay?
Alright, thank you.
Put your pants back on and your shoes, alright?
Oh, shoot, yeah, yes, right. Do you ever have them dreams where you went to school without pants on?
Never.
Really?
No, no, no.
Pretty common, uh, pretty common dream. What about you just go to the shopping centre, you ain't got no pants on?
I don't dream, I never dream.
Oh, really?
That's right, yeah.
Uh, do you smoke marijuana?
No.
Huh.
Right, go on, wait outside.
I don't believe you. Alright, okay, thank you, man. I think she smokes marijuana.
Oh, uh, how do you know?
Uh, just a feeling, right? Just a vibe. I'm pretty sure that lady smokes marijuana. I should ask if she got some marijuana. Have you got any marijuana?
No, I
Oh, shoot, my
I don't, I don't know anyone doing marijuana.
Well, with my, my knives, right? Cocaine, sorry?
Come on, we got, we got for a walk, come on.
Hey, and we gotta wait for her, I think.
Oh, okay, I, I.
I ain't going for the walk right now, I need a drink or some marijuana or something. I'd love some cocaine, shit, because I, you know, it's, because I had it so recently, all I can think about is having some more, but it fucking killed me evidently.
Tell you until meet got again.
What's that? Oh.
Uh, July?
Right, here you go, right, just ignore the name on the, um, the, um, the appointment, sorry.
Another fight name, is it?
Well, it's, no, it's just there was an admin error, so the name needs to be updated, but for now, that's an appointment, I'll see you.
Oh, shoot, does it run? No, you ain't given real names, I'm just, because you know, my colleague O'Ryan is, uh, head of, head of hospitals, right? Up there at City Hall. Does O'Ryan know you ain't giving your name or?
Uh, Orion's, uh, no, it's about the admin error, yeah, it's fine. Um, listen, I've realised just fucked up that note, because I put the date for the next appointment is today. But you know, you don't need me to write another one, do you? It's the twenty eighth, you know?
No, I'd rather this all done, uh.
Right, it's okay, I'll be right back.
You want this one back? You want this one back? What do you have to, what do you have?
Then we need to eat, you know, cause you're the near for that.
Oh, thank you so, yes. She had a attitude, right?
A little, little attitude, yes, see.
Goodness sake. What's her accent she, she has, right?
Hmm, I'm not too sure.
Probably don't know. Oh, what, hang on, George. Did what accent you reckon she hate? Oh, you probably don't, you probably can't remember.
Just, let me, let me hear it and then just kind of see my name on you.
Oh, yes, yes, of course. Alright, don't say nothing until I. Okay, yes.
Right. Here you go, this one's correct this time.
Alright, thank you, thank you, man.
Alright, take care of yourself, remember to chill out. No cocaine, limited alcohol.
Hi, could you, okay, okay, the whole, the world don't need to hear about it.
Yeah, you're right. Sorry about that. Thanks.
Thank you, alright.
I think Jorge's gonna be good for you.
Yes, thank you, Jorge.
I'm prescribing one Jorge a day, alright?
One Jorge a day, that's on mine. You know, I say one Jorge a day, uh.
Keeps the doctor away?
No, no, I wanted to change it up, but okay.
Well, alright. It felt like it fit, cause I'm a doctor, you see.
You liked it well?
It felt like it fit because I'm a doctor.
Oh, yes, right.
Do you think I was a nurse, cause I'm a woman?
Who, mate?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, traditionally, it's usually the, uh, you know, you don't see many male nurses, right? Got a stigma. Traditionalist speaking.
Yeah.
That ain't me talking, right? I am not stuck in, uh, you know, the old dice. But yes, I did think he was a nurse, right? I did, but that ain't because you're a woman. That ain't because, it ain't a sexist thing. It ain't, I ain't sexist.
It's not a sex thing.
Sexiest, hang on, Jorge. No, it ain't a sexiest thing, I ain't a sexiest.
Alright, Mr. Woodcock, you take care now, okay?
It's not because you're a woman, right? Shoot, I didn't even, oh, you're, I didn't even assume you're a woman.
Right. Take care of yourself.
We should probably get, alright, bye-bye, bye-bye. Thank you very much, Doctor.
See you next week.
Okay, bye-bye, nah. Right, they went horribly. I'm try, I mean, I'm trying to tell the lady I'm not a sexy, I just come across as the fucking sexiest. You can't win.
That was, that was very bad.
Yes, right. No, it's this way. Where the hell are you going? Oh, hang on. Alright. Alright, well, you realise, sorry.
I did not know her accent. I, I don't know what it is.
Well, we'll get to that, right? Now, did you park right here?
I see.
Jorge, the fucking police wanna talk to you, right?
Wait, what?
The police wanna talk to you.
Uh, why do they want to talk to me?
Just get out of here to drive.
Okay.
Oh, my lord. I mean, we're just bicyclists sitting on top of each other here. Where the hell are you going?
Where you want me to go?
We gotta go to the beach, doctor's orders, right? Alright, you could, okay, just nice and easy, right?
Okay, where, where do we go?
Well, the beach, Travis Beachy.
Okay, okay.
Double time, I know, I need to unwind, Jorge. Alright, you're George, right?
Oh, oh, I'm in, I'm in the car.
Yes, alright, you're driving.
Where are we going?
The beachy.
Alright.
The beach, I need to go to the beach. Yes. Now. I've had a heart attack, right? I don't know, shit. I've had a heart attack and, uh, I could, you know, I'm up a dawn. Shit, I'm up a dawn. Well, probably not, actually.
I mean, you died about fifty fucking times.
Exactly. Well, you know, what's another time or two? Now. Right, probably take a ride here. Now, okay, I forget, I mean. I forget how much you know, right? Do you know about Plonker?
Uh, I, I, I think so, I, I'm trying to remember. Yeah, I think he told me that he wanted to speak with this, um, Jorge or whatever his name was.
Yes, yes. Well, you're him.
Right, oh, this is your alter ego. Alright, okay.
Well, it's, no, no, not the player.
You're talking with the beach.
The beach, we gotta go to the beach, this is a player. Alright, now. Just get me down the beach, I need to walk this off, right? Alright, oh, we go on the boring side of the beach, alright? I thought we could have gone the, the, you know, the hip hop happening side.
Shut the fuck up.
Who, mate? What are I D? What, what did I D?
You're confusing the shit out of me.
Jorge, I've had a hard ta, uh, George, George. Shoot, this is confusing. I've had a heart attack. You need to get rid of this piece of shit. You realise you bolt this car, right? As your alter ego.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of this fucking piece of shit, can, uh.
Alright, just run that man over, why not? Okay, this is fine, this is fine. Or if you wanna keep driving, yes. I mean, I wanna walk on the beach, I don't wanna walk to the beach. Oh, shoot, alright.
Alright, stay in the car then.
No, I'm sick of this car. Yeah, I need to, I need to get comfortable, right? Oh, I got my, I needed, oh, just wear my joints. Alright, let's go. Alright, Jorge.
Okay, we got the beach, okay, okay. Uh, thank, uh, thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. George for taking us to the beach.
George, 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 forget this, forget him. I'm sick of him. I miss George for goodness sake.
I'm here, you're just.
I feel like, I feel like I've had like two minutes FaceTime with George for the last six months, right?
Right, I'm, I'm here. You just shot him many about ten times, I'm here.
Yes, okay. It's complicated, right?
Right, what's, what's happened?
Alright, I, I was given cocaine yesterday and, uh.
Cocaine, what the fuck are you taking cocaine for?
Well, they told me it was sugar powder and to sniff it, right? And I was just taking a little sniff and next thing, the whole bag's up my nose. And I'm drinking five shots of tequila and then I, you know, died and brought back to life having had a heart attack.
Well, so you died about fifty times now.
I died, oh, I lost count long ago, right? At least thirty four times. Now, that's the least of our problems, right? So you ain't into cocaine?
No, I don't do drugs.
What the fucking hell am I gonna do with this cocaine, my pocket? I'm gonna tip it in the ocean, right? Maybe some, some of these locals wanna buy it.
Right, okay. Right, so start from the top.
Alright.
Not, not you, not you, um, you sniffing the, the white snow part. What's happening with, what's happening with me, George, and this Jorge, whatever his name is?
Yes, first of all, it was cocaine, it wasn't snow.
Well, I think that's just no name for it, I don't know.
Oh, shoot, right. Yes, the snow. Uh, okay. Well. George, you remember, okay, I forget how much you know. Do you remember being up there at the trailer park, at the trailer up north, right? You're hardened out eating cockroaches and.
Yeah, I, I was eating cockroaches.
Dressing the cockroaches up as little lighters.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was, that was Barry Love Roach.
Right. And, uh, okay, high ocean, fuck you, yes. I'm here, fuck you.
Why are you going against the ocean?
Well. It kept sending sharks my way, bottom me, and then it killed my brother. You, do you know, do you not know any of these?
Uh, I didn't know you had a brother.
I had a twin brother. And. He was killed by a shark.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that.
Thank you. You're the first person ever say that to me. People trying to tell me it's all bullshit. But I know. You coming?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Alright. So yes, I hate the ocean, it hates me. But I'm trying to broker a deal with it, uh, using a pirate man. To get my brother out of the, out of the depths of hell. Because, uh, he told me not to kill the shark after he died and I killed the shark. So he was killed. And he came back during the Halloween season to tell me that, uh, he was sent to hell. And that it was all my fault, cause I killed the shark, right?
Jesus Christ.
No, he ain't got nothing to do with it yet.
Sorry, it's been a long time.
Yes, it has. Now, oh, George, it's so good to see you, right? I mean, I mean, I'm looking at Jorge, but, uh, all I can see is George. You with me? You still with me? I can't even. I can't even, okay. Now, let's just say your alter ego is Jose, alright?
Oh, Jose, okay.
Jose, cause then I can at least, you know, alright. So anyways. You were in Harden because of the whole Barris situation, right?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, the, oh, what was his name, buddy? What was his second name?
Good child or some shit like that, right?
Something like that, yeah.
Now. I came to you to save you, right? Cause you were losing your mind up there, losing your health. So I came to save you and we brought you back and we decided, shit, you just gotta go under disguise and, and live as this other person. And you ain't never getting, ain't nowhere but ever gonna know you, George, right?
Right, okay.
And the plan was working perfectly. Until that fucking pesky Plonker somehow, he wants to talk to you, that's all we really know, right? And, uh, I think he wants to talk to you for two reasons now, but I'll get to that, right?
Right, it's okay.
So, uh. I think Plonker has, uh, for some reason looked you up in the, in the system and can't find Jose, right? So he wants to question you about that, which is, I mean, we don't want that. He might figure out that you're actually George.
Oh, well, if that's the case, I don't wanna be anywhere near him, do you know what I mean?
That's right. Yes, cause.
Yeah, I may as well, I may as well just hide out again.
No, 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 we can't, no, I ain't gonna let that happen, right? Now. In the meantime, since that, since all that went down, I mean, uh, do you remember Drake, Doctor Drake?
Uh, yeah, I think, yeah, I think I remember him, yeah, I only remember him like a couple of times, yeah.
Right, well, he, he got married.
Oh, congratulations to the man.
Well, you was there at the wedding as Jose, right? You were helping out with catering. I got the pizzas made by Nanta up at her pizza shop. And, uh, then I handed them off to, to Jose. To, uh, so people could come to him to, to eat, right? I had a ceremony to run. So there we was at the reception, everybody having a good time. And matter of fact, you, Jose, myself and Mr. Daisy. Who's your employer down there at the Avenue Bar, who employed Jose, knowing, knowing that it's actually you, yeah, you know what they had, right?
Yeah, I had, I had to spill the beans about me being the same or the person.
Yes.
I think this is before, maybe.
You lost track of who was who.
Yeah.
It was, right? Now, you remember at the wedding, right? I kept bringing you out. And talking, you know, it was, it was, I had to keep bringing you out, had to keep bringing Jose out. Remember this?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Now, the thing is, uh, now Drake, he died. I don't know, I don't know if you remember, he died at the wedding reception. Garlic poisoning. Man was definitely allergic to garlic. And, uh, now the police are like, well, what the hell? Why, I mean, why the caterers? Have pizza? Why was the man eating pizza? I mean, who handled the pizza? Who knew about the? The allergy, right? So they, uh.
So they're expecting this, um, Ho- Jose.
Yes.
Killed him?
Well, no, but I think he, they wanna talk to him about it, right? They wanna talk to me about it. I assume they wanna talk to, uh, Mr. Nancy about it. I just told him, look, I got the food delivered. Well, my lawyer, I told my lawyer, right? Cause I guess he's on the case. I don't know. So I told him I got the food delivered, then I handed it off to ye. And I don't know who, uh, whether you gave it to somebody else who gave it to Drake. Or if he got it directly off you, right? These are all the things police wanna know, but presumably, I didn't have to do that.
I'm stressed.
Yes, no, I mean, I wanted to do it as, yes, alright. Now. That's about where we at, right? Now Drake's funeral is tomorrow. And, uh. I mean. I don't know who's gonna be there. The thing is, George. I feel like, uh, Jorge is kinda compromised. Hello, Jeff, how you doing?
See, you're needed this work, you know? This is, you know, the cold camp.
Yes.
Look at that pot over there.
I, oh, Jorge, could you, I just wanna enjoy this sunset for a little bit in silence, if you don't mind. Just let's enjoy it, right? Yes.
Let's, let's sit down, okay?
How you doing, Jaffo? Oh, would you look at this? The doctor's orders.
As you're thinking about that, baby, sit, you know, just sit.
Oh, my god, Jorge. Beautiful lining. You know what? Bring, George. George? Jo- George, I just want you to enjoy this sunset with me, right? Fuck Jose.
Sorry, I need to close my eyes for a quick second.
George! I said George, didn't I? George, can you hear me? Alright, he can't hear me. I didn't realise I would enjoy medical peace so much. I don't know if you're being sarcastic or not. Um, sorry, don't mind me, carry on. Thank you very much for the follow. Appreciate it. Yeah, no, that was fun. And, um, you know, you gotta understand, Woodcock, he's, he's. Doesn't deal with stress very well. I'm not, I like getting into the detail. Yeah, right, right. Yeah, I wouldn't mind giving it a go, actually. I had chat G P T hand me with the medical report. Oh, yeah, cool. I haven't even looked at it yet. We'll take a look in a sec. Um. Yeah, you gotta realize. Woodcock, he's, he, uh, doesn't deal with stress very well. I don't think that's, I don't think people get it. I mean, the report on the M D T, not the document I gave you. Oh, right, right, really? Um, yeah. And ironically, he wasn't stressed out when he had a, he was having a great time when he had a heart attack. It wasn't, it wasn't really stress related. Uh, but yes, thank you, thank you very much for the raid. So, yeah, we're just, um. We're with, uh, George slash Jorge. And, uh, I forget exactly how much he knows about the. And, uh, well, I don't know how much anyone knows. So I'm just trying to kind of recap what's happened and maybe figure out where we go next. Uh, luckily, he's only got an all-star, no expense spared panel community meeting to organize. Yeah, well, you know, he might be, maybe he'll get a, you know, a few, uh, few quid. We'll see. See if he's feeling generous. Um. Also, I'm, I'm, I've been meaning to, I was gonna put a ticket in months, months ago about this, uh, about a green screen. Um. So, yeah, I, if that's even a possibility, uh, if it's the one at the movie set. If it's the one I'm thinking of, it's outside, I think, which. Um. You know, the change in light will be, will be a problem. But anyway.
Uh, sorry, sorry, I, 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 I fell asleep. The sun was too, too bright, you know?
Yes, no, that's fine, right? Yeah, we'll do, we'll do, Jaffo. Okay, so, uh, where was, uh, where was we?
I want to do shit, uh.
George, George, George.
Uh-oh, like, okay, we're sitting down?
Yes, all right, where was we? We watched the sunset. I was trying to get you out to watch the sunset, but I don't think you heard me.
Sorry.
No, that, no, it's fine, right? Now. So, thank, okay, so. I think, uh. Jose has been compromised, right? Not that he's been compromised, but he's at a very high risk of being compromised, so. Shoot, I don't know, I think maybe, uh, and I don't want you going back in Harden, right?
Oh, well, that, maybe that's, I don't know, like, maybe that is the best decision.
No, 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 that can't happen, no, no. I seen what it did to you, right? We can't allow that. I wouldn't be able to live myself if you give me another heart attack, right?
Why'd you think about me like that?
But we have to think of something. I mean, this whole, this whole Jose thing worked out real well until it didn't, right?
Right, so what?
And it's a shame.
Can we do?
Well, I don't know, I, well. It's really just that fucking Plonker, right? Okay, I see a few options, right? Option one. We kill Plonker. Which I might.
That's not in the question, you know?
Exactly, exactly. That's why I brought it up to, you know. Obviously, you can't kill police to be, um, we'd pay quite heavily for that. Number T, we double down on Jose. And, uh. Maybe we get, uh. A little more, you know, some plastic surgery, really sell it, right? And maybe if, you know, I mean. Try to find a fake R D. But I don't know, I mean, if, I think Daisy's been looking for that, and if anybody can find her, she can, right?
Yeah, I miss Daisy, lovely woman.
Oh, the wonderful woman, right? Beautiful lady. Kind as well.
Yeah, very lovely.
Yes. And, uh. So I don't see that as being an option neither. Because I mean, we can't find no false R Ds and really sell, because, you know. Really bring it home. Third option. You go back. Live out your days, you know. Making friends out of cockroaches and, uh. You know, being too afraid to walk out your front door. I don't think that's gonna work neither. You're gonna lose your mind and blow everything up.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I think our only real option might be in him out.
Okay, I'm hearing you.
Well, if. Jose got a friend.
All right, okay. So tell me about this friend.
Well. We got Drake's, Drake's funeral coming up, right?
Right, yeah.
Might be a good time to bring a new, new person to town. Oh, I'm just here visiting my dead friend. See what I'm saying? We get your new haircut. Get your new face tattoo.
Saying, okay.
Yes. Clean off that face tattoo you go, get you something else.
Yeah, what the fuck is this fucking tattoo on me?
It's to throw people off to say it, right? It's so people know, oh, shoot, that's, uh, that's not, that ain't Crosby. Crosby ain't got a tattoo and a, uh, you know, a bandito mustache.
Right, it's okay, so it's just gonna be this, this friend of Drake?
Well, I think that, that's, you know. Ain't nobody gonna question that. Oh, here's a man from out of town, uh, visiting, coming for a funeral, right? I ain't nobody gonna scrutinize that too, too much.
So what if this, um, friend misses this funeral or? How, how would you go about with that?
Oh, you, you might not be able to mic it, right, right?
See if you can't make it to the funeral.
Yes. Well, uh.
So maybe you could, maybe.
Nobody gotta know, just be like, yeah, Jose. Just be like, I'm in town to, uh. Or just say, oh, shoot, I missed it, but I'm here to see the grave or some shit, right?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be all right, yeah.
I think if you're here, out, from out of town, visiting a dead friend, ain't nobody gonna scrutinize. They ain't gonna be like, hang on, is that, is that Crosby? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, shoot, I'm gonna have to. Tell Jose this, oh, shoot, I'm gonna have to repeat all of this to him, shoot.
Listen.
Yes.
Go for it, just, just tra- transfer, transfer me in into, um. So Jorge to my.
Yes.
Oh, I'm ready.
You ready? It might be a while till I see you again, right? And listen, listen, George, you go to, listen, like, you've. You can't let it happen, like, there's been a disconnect between you and Jose, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
And you forget who's who and you can't, you ain't in control of who's in control and. Only I apparently can bring out you, you know what I mean? So this can't happen with a third. Person. We'll get lost, we'll get lost. What if George gets lost forever?
Yeah, I don't want that.
Yes.
Listen, before, before I go.
Yes, well, it might be a while till I see you again, so what do you wanna say?
Listen, if, if. I guess if I, if I don't come back or whatever, I don't know what's gonna happen. Just tell Daisy that I really wanted to go out on a date with you.
Jorge.
Ah, look at that pot, they're so nice, yeah, okay.
Beautiful bowl, right?
Lovely pot.
All right, how, uh, Jorge, I was about to call you Jose, but don't, I mean, I had to, had to say Jose. So my friend. Hey, dogs. I had to say, I had, when I was talking to the other man, you realize, you remember what's going on, right? There's like a split between you and this other man and, uh.
Uh, this, uh, Mister, Mister George, George?
That's him, yes, yes. Whenever I say his name, you become him. And whenever I say your name, you become Jorge, right? So I had to talk, when I talk to him, I call you Jose.
Oh, okay.
Just so I'm not constantly bringing you. Yes. Yes, that's right. Okay. Now. Listen, you, you, this identity of yours right now has, has. Is a very high risk of being compromised and we can't take that risk, right? So. Y- your former self and myself have agreed. That we're gonna make a third person for you to take on, right? But, uh, and so we put your former self into the shadows, right? He's just gonna sit back and wait to be called upon. So we're gonna make an extra degree of separation between your former self. And your, and your new self, right? So it's gonna be, uh, particularly difficult for police to extract the truth here.
Ah, okay, okay, I, I think I understand.
Now, we go to think of a new, new you. And we can, but Jorge, please, we cannot allow it to happen where you forget. Where the lines blur between you and your new personality, right? That's gonna make things very, very difficult. Might get rid of George for, uh, Jorge, Jorge. It might get rid of your former self altogether, forever. We can't have that, right?
Ah, yes, I.
He's my friend. I like you, Jorge, but it's your former self that is my friend, right? You all right, you?
Maybe this, maybe this might form a self and should speak, you know? Uh, he could want to speak with, but.
He might won't.
He might want to speak to you a little bit more, maybe to see if he's comfortable with this.
How can you feel him?
Are you told him? Okay.
All right, well, just, okay, I'm gonna call him out. Just remember what I've told you, okay? But I'm gonna call him out now, all right?
Uh, uh, okay, okay.
George.
Just make sure you tell Daisy that.
Jorge. All right, yes, he didn't really wanna talk. He said he was ready. He said he was happy. He said he was proud of you, Jorge. He had so many nice, he said so, had so many nice things about you and me. And he's, and he told me, make sure Jorge. Puts in a good word for you with, uh, Mr. Daisy, right? Think you could do that, Jorge?
Uh, me.
It mean the world to your former self.
And me got the Daisy?
What's that?
Did you say to me to speak to Daisy, did you say?
Put a good word in for my, yes. He thinks, your former self thinks Daisy and myself should be together.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
Yes.
I, I, I thought it was, you know, like, uh, Mr. George, he say. Uh, you and Mister Woodcock are good together.
Well, hang on, uh, you ain't got feelings for Daisy, right?
I mean, just, she, she lovely, uh. She, she.
Oh, shit, all right. Okay, your next person that you become can't have a thing for Mr. Daisy, right?
Uh, okay, I, I. You're gonna have to train, train this next person, not like Daisy.
No, you gonna have to, Jorge.
How, 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 how can Jorge train this next?
Because it's just gonna be Jorge pretending to be somebody else. You can't actually make a new fragment of, of. Your original self as a third distinctive, you, you see what I mean? We're gonna lose. We're gonna lose track of everything.
Sorry, I.
You're ready to forget him.
I, I, sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to forget you.
All right, all right. You know what? I might need to talk to you. You know what, George?
I'll miss Mickey as well, like, you know, he's, he's your best friend. I haven't seen him in a long time, you know?
Yes, poor Mickey, right?
Just make sure you tell Daisy that I like her.
No, no, see, that's the thing. Jorge was telling me that Daisy was telling him that, uh. She don't want you, George. I'm sorry, but she don't want you.
Why would she not want me?
Well, I think Jorge seems to think maybe, you know what, maybe I shouldn't say too. No, George, George, George. Jose seems to think that, you know. I don't know, maybe I shouldn't go into it, right? I don't wanna.
You go into it, you go right into it right now. I wanna hear what this fucking Jose has to say.
All right, you, no, you know what? Uh, what do you want me to say to Mr. Daisy?
Say you go.
I'll tell her, right? I will. I will, I will definitely tell her.
Well, thank you. Could I have a hug? I've not, I've not hugged anyone in such a long time.
A hug? Yeah, yay, of course, right?
Then we'll sit back down.
All right. Right.
Never mind, I think it's just one I wanted. I still want.
There we go, human contact, right? I ain't gonna be some, you ain't gonna be having much of that in the common weeks, right? I hope you're prepared for that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be prepared, it's fine. I just want to hug, that was all.
All right, and, and, okay, I'll tell Daisy that you're thinking of her and, uh. And, uh, Mickey, I, if Mickey comes back, I'll send him your regards, right?
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be great, thank you.
All right, anything else before I put you away? It's gonna be a while.
It's still.
Well, maybe not. I mean, I'll probably be calling upon you every now and then, but still, right, like.
Yeah, that'll be fine. No, that's all I can think about. Um, just tell Cheyenne, he's, he's a nice guy, you know?
You want me to tell Cheyenne he's a nice guy? All right, okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you tell Cheyenne he's a nice guy.
No, he is, he is. Yes, all right, I will. Okay, anything else?
Um. Will I be okay? Because I'm pretty scared.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna be fine, George. You're gonna be just fine. Everything's gonna be okay.
Yeah, I, I will, I'll be all right.
Don't worry, the pain ain't gonna last much longer, okay?
Yeah, I, I miss everyone. I wanna speak to everyone. I'm scared I'll get, go to prison for something I didn't do.
You ain't gonna go to prison.
Yeah, I hate, I hate the body, like, but I didn't kill the guy.
Yes.
I'm not a murderer.
Yeah, I know, right? You're scared, but don't worry, it's all gonna. It's all gonna just disappear.
Yeah, oh.
Now, as soon as I say Jose's real name.
All right.
You're gonna be at peace. You're gonna be at peace, alright?
Alright.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Alright, take a deep breath. Smell that fresh breeze. Okay, close your eyes. Feel the warmth of the morning sun on your back, right? Do you feel that?
Yeah, that's, that's really nice.
The sound of the wives, peaceful, right?
Yeah, absolutely lovely. I'm gonna miss this.
Just, just take it all in. Deep breath in. Let it out. Listen to the sound of the people, the sound of the wives, the birds, the breeze. Just take it all in, right?
Absolutely lovely.
Goodbye, George.
You know, what, what?
Oh, yes.
What's gonna be with the rest that'll happen, eh?
No, we gonna get through this, right? We gonna clear your name. Somehow, shoot, I mean, that's a whole other kettle of fish, but we'll, one thing at a time, okay? We're gonna clear your name, you're gonna be free. You're gonna be free of Jose and whoever the next one is. And whoever the one is after that, if we have to, right? I don't know where this ends. Okay, close your eyes, deep breath, right?
Alright.
At peace. Goodbye, George.
Cheers, Daniel.
How's I? Uh, shoot, uh, no, shoot, uh.
Wrong thing.
Yes, alright. Goodbye, George.
Goodbye, goodbye, Daniel. I'll see you later, mate.
Maybe, maybe not. Uh, Jorge. Alright, you with me, Jorge?
I see, and maybe, maybe this Mister George want to speak, you know, he, he.
We just said a whole goodbye. We just did a whole, you know, maybe this is the last goodbye kind of, alright, okay, uh, George. Yes? Get it off, listen, George, I don't mind, but, George, right, I don't, I don't lose my, my cool here, right? But.
Well, I'm just confused.
This may be a final goodbye. I didn't wanna say, this may be the final.
I've just said my goodbye, why are you bringing me back?
Well, Jorge, uh, George, George, George. Jose said you might wanna decide some.
Tell us, told Jose, I don't fucking share my peace.
You said your voice, you done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, really?
I'm, I'm done with this fucking Jose, Rick, whatever his fucking name is.
Well, it's, hang on, it's, okay, alright. Okay, close your eyes. Just relax, right? Feel the, the, the beach and the sand and. The birds, ruffins, take it all in. Deep breath. Trying to give you something special here, George, to keep you going until we finally get you back out, right? Can you just please be in the moment?
Right, okay. See you later, Daniel.
Well, I've, it's, take a deep, okay, yeah, alright, okay, now, alright. Okay, bye bye now.
See you, Daniel.
Well, now, now, you all can't, could you just be at peace, please, for my sake? I'm the one who's gotta live on.
I'm breathing here.
You won't?
I'm, I'm breathing normally, you told me to.
No, no, breathe, taking the scent, right? Of the ocean and the, the breeze and the sand and the, feel the warmth and the. The laugh, right? Just feel, just experience it in a nice way.
I've experienced it about fifty fucking times.
Alright, okay, alright. I didn't wanna, okay, alright, I was trying to, you know what? The, the shame on me for trying to do something nice, alright? Okay, bye bye.
Shame on you for doing something nice. Shame on you, I told you.
Alright, bye bye now.
See you later.
Jorge. Oh, that was beautiful, Jorge. You should have heard him. He said really nice things, right? Oh, I'mma miss that man.
Lovely man, you know?
Yeah, he is. Shoot, you don't got no, uh, food and drink only, do you?
Ah, see, I got a lot of food.
Yeah, he's right. Alright, let me get some, please. Oh, what the hell? Oh, junk food, this is what my heart needs. Thank you, soul.
I know, I, I, I borrow from, uh, Devon Park, you know?
You won't?
I, I wish, I was at that bar before I got some food and snacks and drinks, you know?
Good thinking. Alright, let's make our way back, right? Alright, so symbolically, we're leaving behind, uh, well, not, not, not really, really. Okay, come on.
Okay, okay, sure, um, uh, by Mister, Mister George.
Well, no, I mean, he's coming with us, but he's, it's symbolically, he's kinda here in spirit, right? Just waiting.
Alright, okay, okay.
You see what I mean? Just enjoying, just enjoying the beach.
Sorry, Mister, Mister Drake, what is, uh, what is his second name?
Cooler.
Drake Cooler?
Yeah, he is. Drake Cooler, doctor man. And a hell of a, uh, funeral man. Oh, shoot, hell of a funeral director as well.
His name sounds like, uh, what is that, the, the vampire? What, what is his name?
Who, uh, Bill Carlton?
Uh, no, 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 not that one. The, the one that, you know, the.
Eric Nelson?
Uh, no, 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 not him.
Russell Edgington?
Uh, maybe, but I don't think that one.
Which, well, which one you thinking of?
Uh, the, the one that lives in the castle and be like, uh, 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 I, I drink your blood.
Dracula?
Oh, that's the one, that's the one.
He, it's, his name sounds like a vampire, you, you can't even, alright, you. D- D- Drakeula sounds like Dracula? Oh, yeah, I'm.
You, you, you.
Yeah, gay as someone. Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I suppose it does, right? It's ironic he died of a garlic overdose, right? The hell is that? What is that bird doing?
Oh, I, it drowned itself. I saw that.
It, that bird just drained itself. Look at it, it's draining.
I'm not too sure. Uh, maybe this lady can go shave it. Oh, no, man, she, she can't see it. She got an act of this on.
Well, she's a, uh, she's a lifesaver, right? She ain't a, uh. Bird handler, okay? Now, yes, alright, so, uh. We need to think of this third, a third. Person that you can become, right? That Jose, that Jorge can become. That we ain't gonna lose track of, right? And, and your former self is, let's just call him Jerry, right? So Jerry.
Myself, Jerry, okay.
Jerry is, uh, nice and safe, right? He ain't ever gonna do time for the crimes he committed.
I see.
We're gonna clear his name, right? So we can't, listen.
Jerry's name, okay.
We can't allow you to lose track of this second, like, like Jerry lost track of you, right? So you became your own self. Now, we can't allow you to lose track of this next person. See what I mean?
I, I think so. But I am Jorge, I've always been Jorge, you know?
Of course. Alright, well, what we think, I mean, shoot, can you do, can you do any voices, right? I mean.
Ah, alright.
We need to change your voice, we need to change your appearance.
Okay, uh. So you want me to be, uh, Drake Cooler's friend?
Well, I think that's, I mean, not necessarily, but I think that's probably a good cover, right? Cause I, Drake ain't around to be like, I don't know this man. So I think maybe it's a good cover. So then when Plonker comes to me and says, oh, I need to talk to whoever the hell your next person is. Well, hopefully it don't get to that point, right? Cause then we'll have to fucking make a new one. Which, I mean. It's, you know, we can't be doing that. It ain't gonna, you know, it's all gonna fall, fall apart.
See, see.
So we need a really good, uh, cover. And, uh, you can't. Raise any suspicion, so the police ain't ever gonna bother looking you up or. Wanting to talk to you, right? Getting your fingerprints, that's the thing. They got Jerry's fingerprints on file. They take your fingerprints or the next man's fingerprints, they gonna know that deep down inside, you go to Jerry inside of you.
Alright, okay, I see.
Yeah, he is.
So, what's his, what's his name? Okay, let's think of the name.
Name be a good first place to start.
Shall he, him, he be friend with Drakeula?
Yeah, he is.
He go to funeral and he be like, uh, I. Oh, oh. I don't know, Vladdy, Vladdy something, you know? Maybe his name is Vladdy. I like Vladdy, you know?
Vladdy?
Yeah, like a V L D D Y, like Vladdy.
Like a Russian man, or?
Yeah, something like that, maybe. Something to, to be some, like, you know, with Drake. Drake, Drakeula does sound a lot like, uh, a Dracula, you know?
Yeah, he is, I suppose you are. Yeah, he is. Oh, you thinking like, uh. Well, keep it kinda vampire themed? Vlad, like, what, like Vlad, uh, the Impaler? You okay?
Ah, yes, I see, I, I, it's good, it's good. Uh, I, I think I got cold.
Right, well, all I said was, uh, Vlad Impaler. Oh, shit.
I don't know, I, sorry, I, it's very cold, I need, I, my shirt is.
What, what's happening? What's happening?
I, I got.
Do you feel the new person coming in?
No, 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 no. I, 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 I'm cold, you see?
Cold, right?
Uh, let's go back to the car, you know, let's go.
You wanna go back to the car, alright. Well, we go to, we go figure out a name, a voice and a, uh. Whole personality, right? I mean, I think it may be, if you wanna, you know. I mean. It, I mean, if, I mean, you're right, Drake, Drakeula does sound like Dracula, right? And people never, never, I don't know if I ever even heard anybody say, oh, she just sound like Dracula, right?
I see, I, I, it, it sounds very familiar, you know?
Yeah, he is.
Maybe I, I, I's wrong, you know, I, I, maybe I didn't think too much about his name, you know?
Well, hang on, maybe that'll work, uh, Vlad, what, what was it? Vlad Impaler? Vlad, Vlad. But that's too similar to him. No, Kai, shit, I mean, this ain't gonna.
I'm shocked, shocked, God.
Listen, okay, Jorge, stop, stop, look at my. It's very important that we, that we do this, right? And I know it's asking a lot, but I mean. I really don't wanna see you fracture into a third person, right? I, I was hoping it. I feel like every time I, we, we get close to coming to an agreement on a, on a new person, you kind of. Something uncontrollable's happening, like when a cat sees a bird, right?
No, I, I guess, I, I'm very, very cold. I need to go to the car. And you get my shirt on, uh, and then I need to go sleep. But you, listen, 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 listen. So you leave, uh, direction to me, okay? Uh, I go out my way to go, uh, to cross store. I work on a voyage. You, you leave it to me, okay? I, I just, I just very cold.
Alright, where it's gonna be, yes, right, where I'm, okay, let's keep, let's keep going. Listen, you gotta make sure it's believable, right? I don't wanna see you fracture again.
No, no, no.
I've already lost, you know, I'm.
Me fracture, me, me fracture, no, me Jorge.
Yeah, he's right, but when you become this other man, maybe you forget your Jorge.
And no, no, no. This Jerry.
Whatever can't happen is what I'm.
This Jerry forget he Jerry. Me Jorge, me always Jorge, you know?
Yeah, he is. Alright, shoot, sorry. Alright, well, uh, I'll leave it to you, but I mean. I really think, uh, I mean, since I'm the only one who can bring. Who can, who can bring you or Jerry out, right? I feel like I may be your, your only tether to reality, right? So. Listen. Whatever happens, I'mma, I'mma take care of you, have your back, right? Make sure you're okay. And if this is something you wanna do alone. I can't, I can't stop you, right? But I mean. Just know I'm here for you, alright? And do whatever you gotta do. I mean, this is pretty serious stuff we're dealing with here, right? It ain't just you who's in trouble. My, Mickey, Cheyenne. Jared?
I see, I, I see, see.
Lot on your shoulders, Jorge.
It's, I, this, I'm very, 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 very cold. I can't, I can't.
You want.
I'm shocked, I'm shocked right now.
You're freezing cold.
See, I, I, I don't know why this, uh, this sound is not making.
Here, here, Jorge. I got something that might fix that, right? You didn't get that from me.
Okay, okay.
Now, I had some of that yesterday. And gave me a hard take, right? But I mean, it's, it's, cause it's also stress related.
So maybe, maybe with this, this thing, uh, like, do you know the appearance for this, no? You should do a new passion? Maybe I can, like, maybe I can, cause I could, could change my face, you know? Maybe this man, I can, um, look. Like cocaine, you know? It doesn't make sense.
You can look like cocaine?
Yeah, the, you know, the, I'm gonna be disguising, you know?
Oh, as cocaine? I don't think that's the best disguise.
Listen, you, you leave it to me, okay?
Alright, well, hang on, but. Have you had cocaine before, Jorge?
Uh, no.
Do you know how to do it? You want me to show you? Alright, well, no, I, shoot, I can't do that neither.
Uh, li- listen, you should go to the car.
We headed back to the car, don't worry. I'mma leave it to you, okay? Listen, I got, I got city business. I'mma leave it to you, okay? Listen, I got, I got city business I need to attend to, and we can't exactly be seen together, right? I'm risking my ass out here as it is. You need help, I can help you. If you don't, even battle.
Okay. Uh, when do, where do you want me to take you?
You know, won't take me to, uh, take me to the apartment, please.
Okey dokeys.
Yeah, yes. You ever used a, your video camera?
Uh, no.
Maybe this next man, could you make your next man a, like a, um, he's like a cameraman or sound guy or something like that, right?
Oh, okay, I could, I can do that.
He knows Kung Fu or something, like somebody who can take care of himself. You see what I mean?
I see.
You give him the ability to, uh, take really nice, uh, footage with a video camera. And, uh, make him, you know, give him Kung Fu abilities or something like that, right?
Uh, sure, like, uh.
Somebody who's a bit of a badass.
Sure, okay, badass Kung Fu, okay.
Yeah, yes. And, uh, knows he's way around a, uh, film studio.
Okay, film studio, okay.
Yeah, yes. Video cameras, sound equipment, blue screens, green screens, lighting.
Okay, I, I do that, don't you worry, don't.
Tripods. All of that, right?
Okey dokeys. I, I, I'm gonna go stay to sleep. I'm very tired, but, uh, leave me, you, um, you'll leave it to me, okay?
I'll leave it to you, alright? I, I mean, I'm trusting you here, Ho Hi. And Jared's laughter pans on it.
Okey dokeys.
Anything happens to Jared, it's gonna happen to all y'all.
Listen, me hokey, me expect of these things, you know?
Yeah, yes. Alright. No, I believe in you, right? Just like Jared, you know? Hell of a handy man, hell of a handy man. I'm sure, you know, you got a bit of that in you as well.
Uh, me handy man, no.
I'm sure you go, you know, the, the essence.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, yes. Alright, gold speed, Ho Hi.
You're listening to me. I, I take care of this, okay?
Alright, I believe in you. You give me a call, try to make it to the funeral, right?
I, I, I tried, I, I.
If no, if no, maybe you, you just call me as soon as you're ready, okay?
Okey dokeys.
Don't, don't, uh, drag your feet. Be lickety-split about it, alright?
Oh, okay.
Alright, bye bye, so.
Good, good.
And good luck.
You too.
Alright, after you, please. Alright. That's silly. That's pretty silly. Alright, shall we, uh, go pop in, say, Ida Ray Aiden? Who's celebrating his, uh, one year affiliate? Oh my god, what is he doing? Oh geez. Alright. Well, enjoy the visual when we get over there. Thanks, thanks, Doug. That was, that was fun. Um, alright, let's go. See yous over there. Peace out.